Calling to order, the Needham Select Board Meeting of October 11th, 2022. The first item on our agenda is public comment. I have been informed that there's someone from the public who wish to speak this evening. Is that person here? On Zoom? Okay.
Hello.
Hello, Miko. How are you?
Good. I'm actually, um, do you have my statement in front of me? If you do, can you please read it all out because I'm at the train station right now?
Uh. I know I did not have it up, so hold on a second.
All right, do you say you have it or you don't?
I can get it.
Okay, if you can get it, that'd be great because I'm at the train station. It's really loud over here.
So you would like me to read your statement, is that it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So this is Ms. Ho and I don't know, do I have your, um, can you just give me your street address for the record, please?
Twenty-one Utica Road.
Twenty-one Utica Road. Okay. Ms. Ho is speaking today about the special permit process, which having attended the special permit hearing that started this summer, she knows there is little or no residential taxpayer support for the project that's being proposed at 1.21 FAR with an estimated tax revenue of $5 million. As a community, we have never been provided with a reason why this project should be bigger, be built bigger, 70% bigger than the as-of-right size. This burden of proof has never been met. Using the same assumptions that Pujer used for the fiscal impact analysis, the projected tax revenue for the project at as-of-the-right size is 2.9 million. The difference between 5 million and 2.9 million is 2.1, which is 1% of our FY '22 revenue. For the additional 1% tax revenue, so many families' quality of life will be impacted. I will never feel, she will never feel safe letting her children just play in the streets. When she tells people that she meets that she lives in Needham, the first thing to comment on is the great school system. If families are moving to Needham for school, what does putting a huge bio lab oversized office building that serves the purpose of the developers to maximize their profit at the expense of residential concern? And that doesn't fit in the fabric of the surrounding neighborhood, say about our values and the ability of our town to hear the taxpayers who are moving here for schools and their family. From the special permit. Sorry, this is an eye test. From the special permit, section five, a Floria ratio of up to 1.35 may be permitted by a special permit from the planning board. In granting such special permit, the planning board shall consider the following factors: the ability of existing or proposed infrastructure to adequately service the proposed facility without negatively impacting existing uses or infrastructure, including but not limited to water supply, drainage sewer, natural gas, electric services, impact on traffic conditions, adjacent streets, nearby neighborhoods included, but not limited to the adequacy of the roads and intersections to safely and effectively provide access and egress, the environmental impacts of the proposal and the fiscal implications of the proposal to the town. In granting a special permit, the planning board shall also consider any proposed mitigation measures and whether the proposed project's benefits to the town outweigh the costs and adverse impacts, if any, to the town. If we care, if we are care housing, we should have made that a requirement for the development of the land. We wouldn't be at this point where we are subjected to an office development proposal where cost to updating our water main sewer from the baseline as-of-right size isn't even factored in the cost of the town, least of all other existing infrastructure costs related to water supply, drainage sewage, natural gas and electric services. I urge our town select board to review our zoning processes, especially the special permit process, to make sure the community input is valued versus disregard and ignored, given that we are a working group to increase housing in the town. Finally, the burden of proof to allow this project to be bigger than as-of-right has not been demonstrated to the community. So Ms. Ho, I thank you for your comment. Usually we do not have any kind of back and forth in this. The one point that I do specifically want to address is the planning board does have this matter under their jurisdiction. They have actually addressed and discussed and will be discussing all the matters that relate to the various impacts of the special permit. The question of $5 million is actually fairly significant, particularly to the schools that you highlight. And the town anticipates that the revenue from this project will be significant and a significant contributor to our ability to pay for the upcoming school projects at the Pollard and the Mitchell, which is a huge cost going forward. So thank you for that comment.
Sorry, I just want to interject and say that we are not, I'm not saying, we do get tax revenue when the project is built as-of-right. It's not that there's no tax revenue. We just have to look at the incremental tax revenue. So that's what I, I'm trying to point out, what is incremental? And do people understand what incremental is?
So, so yes, thank you. We understand that as well. Agreed. Okay. All right, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing, a grant of location for 68 Clark Circle. And I believe we're probably bringing Ms. Calendar over. While we're doing that, I can ask the town manager if everything is in order for this grant of location?
It is.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, Julianne. How are you?
Very well. Hope everyone is well. Thank you.
So tonight, 68 Clark Circle, if you could just brief us on the request?
Yes, EverSource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately nine feet of conduit into Clark Circle. And this is to provide new electric service to the new home at 68 Clark Circle.
Terrific. I understand that everything is in order in this. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? Seeing no one, any questions from the board? Then if I could have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the select board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately nine feet of conduit in Clark Circle.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved. Appointments, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yep, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I should have asked, is any discussion? Then it's unanimous. Thank you. The next item is an update from our Director of Public Works. I know I saw Karis. Ms. Lustig could join us. Good evening.
Hi, Karis.
Um, so I am here today to talk about a proposed project that EverSource has planned for the Webster Street area in front of the high school from West Street just past Kingsbury. And this is a fairly large and substantial project. It normally goes through our street opening permit process, which is more of a bureaucratic regulatory process. But because of the nature of this particular request, the scope of it, the fact that it would impact an area that is highly traveled as well as sensitive for the schools, I wanted to bring it to the board for just consideration and discussion. This particular project is replacing the existing three-inch pipe that is in the ground in this location and replacing it with an upgrade of a six-inch pipe. I do know from having worked in our facilities department for a while that the high school has struggled in more recent years with getting sufficient capacity on the coldest days that we have. This particular area, when the high school was converted to natural gas, did not have as many residential clients in the area that were on gas compared to now where there are more individuals in this office main who are utilizing gas. So there is a benefit to the community and to the town for this project and the enhanced capacity. There's also concerns about this particular pipe and sort of long-term sustainability of it. It's an older pipe and they do have concerns about leakage along that pipe. And so right now, this is a proactive replacement. There's no emergency work required, but if we did not grant this street opening permit, it could result in emergency work like we saw on Chestnut Street earlier this year. The other thing that is a little bit different about this request is that they're looking at doing some work off-season. So our street opening permit for work in the street shuts off November 15th. And they are looking to exceed that by a few additional weeks in order to get this project done in a relatively short timeframe. We have not historically allowed work on the off-season because we want to protect our infrastructure during the snow operations. Last year, we did allow EverSource to do some of their work on Chestnut Street off-season, but with some specific conditions in place to make sure that there's no equipment left on the road and to make sure that there are no plates left overnight when we have snowing events. And then also to ensure that they are actually in control of the site and responsible for snow and ice removal during snow events and not, and not the town. Additionally, we've talked to them about not working in front of the school. And we've worked with the school and the police department as part of determining what the schedule will be for work in this area and that that work will be done over the summer. Obviously, there's a few events that we have in town over the summer around the high school. And so we would make sure that work would not occur in the days prior to and during those holidays. So this would be on the parade route as well as a lot of people use this as an access point for the fireworks. What they're proposing is actually redistributing crews that they already have in town. Right now, EverSource Gas has three crews that they're operating at different points in town. And as those projects wrap up within the next week or so, reallocating those crews to this project. And they'd be looking at working on either side of the high school and their way in. And then next summer, coming back and working in front of the high school. The reason we're entertaining the idea of a winter permit is simply to consolidate the schedule so that way they're in, out of that main area in a faster time. And additionally, we're looking at negotiating a full overlay of the road as opposed to just a trench patch and repair. And we're in discussions right now about whether or not that would be done by EverSource or if they would pay the town and have the town perform the work. So we're hoping at the end of the day to have a better, or at least equal product to what we currently have as far as the condition of road for people who bike and ride on the road.
Karis, we don't have information in here, I think, about working hours for the project. Have you discussed any of that with them?
I, we've discussed it as far as all of our street permits are bound by our noise ordinance. We typically don't do work on weekends, although we have allowed for certain projects to occur on weekends to try to, again, expedite the projects. And that's on a case-by-case basis. And I don't believe we're looking at any off-hours work as far as overnight work in this location.
And we haven't done any notification of a butters, I think, on this because I just, that's a question, I think, but I'm not aware of.
We have not granted them the street opening permit yet. So they have not done any notification of the butters.
Okay, so the schedule that we got presumed to start next week, I think, if I'm remembering correctly. So is there a process that, does it happen internal to your department to grant them a street opening permit after some discussion here?
Yes, so we would issue a street opening permit through our normal process. And that street opening permit, we don't dictate the time of the beginning or the end of the permit. We do ask particularly the utility to contact us in advance to make sure that we're able to communicate internally and make sure that we're aware that they're doing construction on a, particularly on a major road. But it's the responsibility of the street, the person who's opening the street to notify the butters.
Okay. And then the last question that I have before turning it to my other colleagues. I'm a little bit concerned about how this EverSource project intersects with the EverSource Electricity project that was articulated to us for Brookline, which also is requesting some off-season road opening permits. It hasn't come before us to have a discussion, but, but the overlay of those two in that same area conceivably causes a significant burden to that area. And I just, I'm not clear on the overall effect yet.
So there was a meeting last week where we brought EverSource Gas and EverSource Electric into the same room to discuss about it. Interestingly enough, it, that was incumbent upon us to make sure that they were communicating. And my understanding of the EverSource Electric project is that they will not be starting until the spring. So there won't be an immediate impact and that they won't be occurring at the same time. And one of the things we've discussed internally is that if we do allow work on the off-season, which again is something that we haven't historically done, that we would only allow it for one location in town. So there isn't the option of multiple projects occurring off-season. It's just too difficult for our snow crews to manage. So essentially, the utility would have to pick where their highest priority was. And in that meeting, the discussion was that that was going to be this gas main project. There is some overlap that would occur, though, in the spring when they're doing the area in front of a high school. And the police are heavily involved in the conversation about detours and traffic management. And so we would be leaning on the police department to provide us guidance about which project could move forward. The difference between this project and the electric project is that the electric project does require a grant of location. So they would be coming before you, before they were able to do any excavation.
Okay.
Thank you, Karis. So my question is, as far as what we know, next week, what is the traffic buildup, holdup, police, I guess, interaction that we're going to have for that? And is, is it going to be done once the, our students are in school? Are we going to start or before they get to school? And how would that affect the commutes in and out?
So we're working, there's sort of twofold. We're working with the police department to deal with the routing around the school. And it's, we're lucky in that particular neighborhood and there's a lot of parallel streets that we can redirect traffic around. So the police department was less concerned about that particular location than they have been in other locations in town. We would talk to the utility about potentially suspending work or doing different types of work during drop-off and pickup time. We're doing lots of projects right now in town and it seems like there's a school everywhere. So every project is very close to a school. And that's exactly what we've had to do on Central. That's what we've had to do on Dedham and Harris. And so this would be the same. But we would work with the transportation coordinator at the high school and the principal of the high school to make sure that we're being, that there being as disruptive, as little disruption as possible.
Got it. And then for the weekend work that may possibly happen? I know as far as town sports and things and getting through that street being as busy as it is, will we still have the same kind of police detailer for the weekend as well?
Yes, that would be a requirement that if they're doing any work in the row, that the police department would have to provide. Either it's a police detail, a detour, or whatever it is, but they would be the ones who would make the determination on what's closed.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair? Karis, thank you for this update. Just two questions as far as permitting. Are we going to permit this in bulk? Or are we looking to do it in phases whereby they do a certain section? And then almost if it's good or they do the, you know, curb-to-curb, you say, okay, we're going to release the next kind of phase of it. I think it might be something worthwhile instead of just doing this in mass, but that's up to you. And then second, while we have these roads open, is there anything the town is looking to do in those areas that, you know, as far as a repair or is that kind of too much to do at this time?
So there's no water main or sewer main work that we anticipate doing on these roads. I think if there was ever any work done on this particular section, it might be more dealing with the right-of-way, like a complete streets type of work that would be, I would say, beyond the scope of what we're looking at for an overlay. As far as the permitting goes, we would have to, they'd have to seek two permits anyways because we're going through two construction seasons and a permit is only good for that construction season that it's applied for. As far as the paving goes, I would have to talk to our highway superintendent to see if there's any value in doing it in two separate sections or if it makes more sense to do it in one, one pass as far as getting a better product at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Karis, I'm going to say thank you for letting us know. I'm sure there are residents in town who will be surprised by this. So I hope that their notification of people is broad. In fact, I hope it's broader than as required. So if we're conceivably using parallel streets, I would like it to include any street that gets impacted by a travel route. So that when we're getting right up to that point, I think, yeah.
Yeah. At the high school, put in the news from the hill.
Terrific. Thank you. And congratulations on getting both sides of EverSource into a room at the same time. We know that that is a rare event.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I'd like to invite Jack Dolly up to discuss our Charles River Street project at Castle Farm, the Foster property. Come on up here. So I think a number of members of the town are aware, the town has published that we are working in partnership with Northland to acquire some land. Our interest is in acquiring land for open space purposes for the town. Part of what's allowing us to acquire land at the price that has been set is an arrangement with Mr. Dolly, with Northland. So he's going to be here to discuss the project that he's proposed to the board. Thank you. And I think we're getting your slides up, right?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Just as a way of introduction, my name is Jack Dolly. I'm the owner, president and CEO of a company called Northland Residential Corporation. And we're based in West Concord, Mass. I have put together a slide deck here that I'll attempt to skate through. And I didn't bring handouts, but I can provide them or Christian has them. Or the PDF and copies can be made if necessary, or I can distribute them another, another day.
So just note for members of the public who are watching, we can certainly add the presentation to the website that the town has.
Okay, thank you. So this is my deck. We put this together over the weekend, finished it up today. The opening picture is an image that was provided by the Stellar, which provides an aerial overview of a portion of the property. The property is about 64 acres and change in size and is mostly open land, but does include a large older home circa 1900 to talk about it. I don't know how I advanced here. There, thank you. Magic. A lot of, lot of numbers and pieces on this, so sorry for the density. But for those that aren't familiar with the property, I'll try to cite some of this quickly. And you can, you can urge me along. Castle Farm has been owned by the Foster family for a very, very, very long time. As it says across the top, it is comprised of three different parcels totaling a little over 64 acres in size and has about 1,100 feet and 53 feet of frontage along Charles River Road. The three parcels specifically are two small three-acre parcels, which are the yellow ones on the upper right of the, of the middle image, if you will. Those are what we call the A and R parcels, and I'll talk about that in a minute. The left-hand small parcel is 3.25 acres in size with a little over 475 feet of frontage. And then to the right of that or to the east is a 3.05 acre parcel, a little over 450 feet of frontage. What is important to note there is that those two parcels are really sort of missing teeth or out parcels of the Ridge Hill parcel, which is owned by the town and controlled by the, I believe, the Conservation Commission on behalf of the town, which is an approximately 34-acre piece of land that runs from the Charles River Road all the way down to the Charles River. And the dash lines that, that you can see coursing through all of the, the map there are open, open trails are really essentially public trails, some of which are on town-owned land, some of which are on the Castle Farm property, but are presently used by, by many. The main parcel is the largest parcel of the holding. It is the large yellow parcel, as you can see there, which is about 57.8 acres in size. Very limited amount of frontage on Charles River Road, a little over 200 feet. But it, it does contain or own the majority or all of the river frontage along the Charles River, which consists of 2,523 lineal feet of frontage along the river, including what you'll see at the bottom of the image there, this marshy area outlined on below the blue, which I don't think anyone's been on, or I'll say I have not been on. It's mostly wet. It's not an island. It's, it's really a marshland. The main parcel is accessed through a common driveway. And I don't have a pointer, but the common driveway comes in at the top of the page. The common driveway services not only the Foster property, but the out parcel in the middle, which is often referred to as the Kettle Parcel because it's owned by Bill and Cindy Kettle. That driveway, it's, I can't trace it here, but that driveway comes in at the top of the page on the Kettle Property courses into the main parcel to service the, the state house, the Foster home, and has a branch that, that circles or bends off to the east to circle or to access the Kettle Property. The Kettles have an easement to use that driveway. And that easement is in perpetuity. The main house is improved with a number of buildings, namely 10,000 square foot circa 1900 home and outbuildings that haven't been occupied for a number of years. Mr. Foster passed a bit ago and his wife lived in the house until her passing in the last few years. The zoning for the, for the record in, in this area is Rural Residence Conservation, RRC, which allows for a one-acre building site with, provided it has 150 feet of frontage on some form of road. And there have been a number of different plotting plaits put, put together for an as-of-right use that range from 20 to 25, single-family, one-acre lots. Conventional, single-family subdivision, a lot like what you see along the left-hand or western side of the image in the middle, Whitman Road, the houses that run, you know, from the top of the image to, to the bottom. There is public water, sewer, natural gas and electric in or along Charles River Road or along the river, believe it or not. There are two main large sewer trunk lines that course along the bottom of the Foster property, an MWRA line and a Wellesley line. Notably, all of these lands, the holdings of the Fosters, but the Ridge Hill parcel, that the light green area that you see there, which was originally a, the Foster's property. They deeded it and/or sold it to the town 40 years ago, I believe.
A little more, 1981.
1981, I was going to say early 80s. And it is, if I remember correctly, it is owned or it's owned by the town and managed by the Conservation Commission on, on behalf of the town. The image up on the right is the same age as the one in the middle. It's just a different format. It's called an ortho photographic image. It tries to show the existing condition of the property. And you'll see that, you know, most of what you can see there is forested. There's, there is a bunch of cleared land, which the images will show in a minute, which are down along the river. And that really is, they're really the special piece of land. Next slide, please. I won't read any of the information on the right because it was contained on the prior slide. But this image is trying to provide sort of a conservation contextual understanding of where this piece of land sits within existing conservation land owned and/or managed or nearby within the town. And that's all the green land. You can see a tremendous amount of green land on the north side of Charles River Road, running up around the lakes and almost running all the way to the town of Wellesley. What we're, what we're envisioning here and what I envisioned when I walked the property in early December was a way to preserve much of the Foster property through the clustered development of a portion of the property in order to create an, almost a 400-acre corridor that runs from the Charles River all the way up to the, to the Wellesley line, to the top of the page. We can come back to this later, but this, this is trying to, to really highlight how much conservation land is in this corner of town and how important this piece of land is to create, you know, a wholesome contiguous link among these various parcels. Next slide, please. Don't want to dwell a lot. Don't want to dwell a lot on this, but I do want to, you know, again, reiterate, you know, the site and, and some of the as-of-right scenarios. The left-hand image is what you saw before in whole. Again, the two, three acre parcels at the top of the page and the main parcel to the bottom left. And if we look at various different platins in there, we, we probably have six of them, and none of them are right. They're all have flaws, but we can look at it through a couple of different lens. One is a conventional as-of-right lens where one acre, a hundred and fifty-foot subdivision lots are created, and then there are some residential compound lots, larger lots, as well as in what is referred to an approval not required or A and R-ing of the smaller parcels, three acre parcels. Full buildout of this parcel could yield somewhere between twenty and twenty-five. We have a plan as high as twenty-eight lots. If one were to go down that path, there would be little or no open space, publicly accessible land holdings made available. That's not a threat. That's just stating what might be done with the property through a conventional application of your zoning bylaw. Next slide.
That's twenty to twenty-five, plus the six lots along Charles River Street.
Yes, yeah. So here is just, you know, here is, if you will, the property. I know that members of the town were invited out on the property prior to, to me last fall. I, I was asked to walk the property in early December. The property is spectacular. I will say that I've been with Northland since May twentieth nineteen eighty-five, which is something like thirty-seven years. I have walked acres and acres and acres of property from Mount Desert to Burlington, Maine, a brand new Burlington, Vermont, to Newport, Rhode Island, somewhere in there, and had the opportunity to work on some really, really, really special and unique pieces of property. This is a top five, if not a top three. I'm working on something in Milton, which was sixty acres, sandwiched up against the Blue Hill Reservation, very similar. It was zoned for two acre zoning. It had the same sort of wooded and open field characteristics and a big old house surrounded by conservation land behind and to the left, and we did exactly what I've envisioned for the property or what I envisioned for the property when I first set foot on it, and that is preserve a substantial fifty percent more of the property as open space by clustering intensively, a development on a portion of the property. But this goes to looking at the land. So on the, on the left, we have the lower riverside meadow. This is all along the river, and you can see that finger, that island or marshy area out on the far left. The middle, the, to the right is the image you originally saw, view of the house with a big meadow area in front of it. Next slide, please. Under an agreement cast many, many years ago between Mr. Foster and Mr. and Mrs. Kettle, the property is maintained by the kettles presently and has been for years, using Mr. Foster's mower, tractor. They mow paths and fields so that we have these vistas and these experiences as you walk through the forested land and the opens, open areas of the land. It, it is, it is truly beautiful. And the path on the left is down along the river. The path on the right is through, is actually a downhill sloping path coming out of the forested area. Next, please. Some more of the same. And, and, you know, as you, as you walk the property, it speaks to you. I, I had a, I had a mentor that, that when we started this, I started in this career and we walked land. I once asked him, as a twenty-three-year-old, what do you look at when you do this? He says, I let the land speak to you. If you let the land speak to you, it, it'll, it'll, it'll speak to you. It'll talk to you. And, and when we were out there, we could really feel how this property worked, the love and care that had been employed by the Fosters and more recently by their, their, their son and daughter and, and the kettles in, in maintaining the property and, and, and making it accessible to not only themselves, but to others. So we look to, you know, carry that notion forward. Next slide, please. Again, a little bit more. The bottom, by the, the right-hand picture, you get a glimpse of this common driveway, which is literally a driveway. It's probably fourteen or fifteen feet wide. Two cars can pass politely on it. I would say it is maintained by the Fosters and the kettles under agreement, meaning it's plowed and stuff, and when trees fall or potholes occur, they, they go about making it accessible. There's an allay, sort of an overgrown allay below the existing house that provides this vista down to the river. It's been great. It's grown in quite a bit from the left and the right, but there is a, there is a glimpse, and it has been mowed, you know, to, to, to capture this long-range view to the south to the river. Next slide, please. Okay. So as I walked the property with my colleagues, what did I see? I saw two out parcels to, along, along the street that could easily be, you know, subdivided into one acre, you know, what we call A and R, approval not required. What that means is provided the, the size and width and, and dimensions of a parcel can be sketched up so that they are compliant with zoning, no approval is required, hence approval not required. Those three, those two little ears, if you will, or missing teeth could be subdivided very quickly into, without any approvals, just file a plan in a ninety-day period. They're buildable lots, six of them. They, they would ruin, in my view, what is presently a pretty pleasant experience as one bikes, walks, or, or drives along Charles River Road through this section. It's lovely. You have, you know, open space, preserved wooded land to the north, and essentially the frontage of, of all of this property feels the same, but carving six homes in there would change the character dramatically. It also changes the character of the experience that one might have when they're in Ridge Hill Reservation, looking back. Those, those lots would likely be substantially cleared to the rear property lines for yard area and septic systems and the like. So it, it's quite of an infringement. The other, the other area that really speaks to you, if you look at the land area to the right of the out parcel in the middle, the kettle property, I should tell everyone, the top of this page is north, the bottom of the page is south, right is east and left is west. So I will use that compass all the time as, as, as a land person. But the, the land area that you can see to the south of the kettles and to the east of the kettles, which is in part wooded, in part open field area, there's a nice walking path that runs from the existing common driveway down into it. Really doesn't speak to you as a place that should be filled with houses. It's a little hard to get to. It's lovely once you get there. I mean, a home down overlooking the river below the kettles or three of them down there would be really, really special lots. But it doesn't really feel like the high, I won't say the highest and best use of the property. It doesn't feel like the right use of the property. It, it feels as if that whole eastern corridor of Ridge Hill Road, running from Charles River Road down to the east of the kettles and then wrapping along the bottom of the property back toward Whitman Road on the left side of this image wants to be preserved, wants to be open space, wants to be left in a natural space and be allowed to be accessed in a passive recreational kind of way, walking, skiing, walking your dog, snowshoeing, that kind of things. And that the parcel in which the main house is located, which you can kind of see, there's a little blip. That parcel is, if you will, separated, distinct from Ridge Hill. It is just, you know, to the east or west of the, the common driveway. It's to, it, it is partially improved with the kettle's home and outbuildings and open space. It's relatively flat. It's devoid of wetlands. It is developable. It's probably the most developable and the most sensitively area to develop of, of all of the property, if you look at the property overall. So as we walked it, it just, like I said, the land spoke to me, and it said, I can see some form of clustering in that, what we, what is referred to as the Northland Residential. I think that says development parcel. I can't read it from here. And, and that the rest of, the other property, the rest of the property be looked at in a different way. So I reached out to the town. I knew a member of the town, of someone who lived in the town, someone who's worked in town governance over the years through another life, and I reached out to say, do you know of the property? I just walked it. I have some ideas. Would you be interested in having a, a conversation? This was in early December or early January, and we, you know, we put our heads together and came up with a notion that similar to what I did in, in Milton. You know, in Milton, it's a sixty acre piece of property. It was zoned for two acre house lots. I could put twenty-eight of them there, I think, or, or something to that effect. We ended up preserving about fifty-five percent of that land through conservation restriction and clustering a development of what of empty nester, active adult townhouse units on a portion of it. So our proposal that, that we have envisioned and that we have put our heads together with your Board of Selectment envisions that I buy the property from the sellers. I have an executed offer to purchase. The, the purchase and sale agreement is likely to be executed in the next two to three days. The attorneys were going back and forth. As recently as eleven o'clock this morning, we're down to sort of nits and nats, no, no major deal terms, but it would envision me that I, excuse me, Northland would buy the entire property for twenty-one million dollars. That we would sell to the town for two and a half million dollars. The two, three acre parcels at the top, plus a twenty-eight, approximately a twenty-eight, eight, twenty-eight acre parcel of land, which is the, the, the land area that I described encircling the, the kettle property. I would retain the balance of the property again, which is approximately twenty-eight acres. Now, someone's gonna ask me, the total parcel is fifty-seven point six acres, twenty, twenty-eight plus twenty-eight is only fifty-six. I'm, I'm using approximate numbers because I haven't surveyed the property yet. But what are the, the big picture concept is the town ends up with about thirty-four acres, thirty-four to thirty-five acres. And that I end up with approximately twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-eight acres right in the middle that you see, and for which I would implement what we call a age-directed condominium or clustered condominium development. I'm doing one on Great Plain Ab and Wellesley presently. I've done some in Belmont. I've done some in Milton, Sudbury, Hanover, New Hampshire, Duxbury, Mass. What am I speaking about? It's basically empty nester housing that is not age-restricted. It is not deed-restricted by deed. It is designed in such a way to be attractive to active adults, a fifty-five or older clientele. And it's a condominium form of ownership. It's a first floor master bedroom as a requirement. It's two to three bedrooms in size. It is not a five-bedroom, thirty-five to forty-five hundred square foot, single-family house with a play yard around it. Their children are not prohibited. They're not discouraged. The market sort of self-segregates who wants to live here or not. This would be, there is not a permitting regime in your zoning bylaw that allows this. So the notion has been, and the notion that's been discussed, is that we would implement this via a friendly forty B, in which we would pursue permit entitlements or permits and approvals with the zoning board of appeals, and we would allocate a portion of the seventy units as affordable at eighty percent area median income, and the entire project would be subject to the rules and regulation of the Comprehensive Permit Act, AKA forty B, which I won't go into because there are volumines. What this requires is that the, the town appropriate or allocate through town meeting vote a, at a minimum, a two-point-five million dollar funding against the twenty-one million dollar purchase price. As I said, at a minimum, it's the minimum that I require, but there may be some transactional costs or other costs that the town has in their thinking that I know nothing about, making this up as I sit here looking at Kate. But under the pure construct of, of, of the, of the vision here, that is what's necessary to consummate this. Timing, your town meeting is coming up. The entitlement and the due diligence and the ultimate closing on the property is likely sometime in the second quarter of next year. There's a sixty-day due diligence period, which would start this week. They would allow me to do, survey soils, assess municipal sewer connection, water connections and the like, and begin the forty B, friendly forty B process. We would look to execute what we refer to as a development agreement with, with the town, which is exactly what I, I did in our Milton, two Milton projects that I did, is for an intended use such as this. We would craft all this in writing in the form of the development agreement. It would bind me to do the project that I am telling you that I want to do. It would bind you to buy the property that you say you want to buy, and it would outline a pathway to accomplish it. Next slide, if there is one. I won't wax too long about Northland. Yeah, a fifty-plus-year-old company. We focus really in residential for-sale housing. A fair amount of it is attached condominium format. Lower right, something that we did at Union Point down in Waymouth at the Naval Air Station. The image above it is at Black Rock and Hingham. The image above that in the upper right is down in the Cape along a golf course. The big image is our project that we completed years ago now up on the McLean Hospital site. We did do five single-family homes on Washington Street in Wellesley that you might see opposite Wellesley College. I'm working on another parcel in Belmont, as well as some other things throughout by a hundred and forty units of, of housing in Mashpee Commons with the owner in Mashpee Commons and some other things in the pipeline. We're privately owned. We're a company of about twenty people. We build our own product, market our own product. We permit our own product. We use a whole bunch of resources, lawyers, doctors and engineers, well, not doctors, well, maybe doctors. It's a challenging process. That's who we are. I would, at, at this point, I'm point on this, although a colleague of mine, Peter Crabtree, would likely come into the fold once we got through due diligence. Last slide, I think, is just a conclusion. Thank you. I'll take questions of the board or the public as, as you feel.
Thank you, Jack. All right. So I think as members of the public know, this has been a long project in that Jack mentioned walking the property in December. I think I was first told about it on September eleventh and told Kate that same day. But something certainly that we have been interested in since we were made aware of it, and it has been the Concom's top priority for land acquisition. So with that, I will open it up to my colleagues for questions about this particular project. I guess the one other thing I want to mention is we have told the Whitman Road, so that the budding neighborhood, that we will be coming to speak with them with Jack sometime in mid-November, I think, is the tentative date that we've got, so that that community has an opportunity to ask their own specific questions. so that that community has an opportunity to ask their own specific questions.
Jack, thank you, and thank you for a comprehensive presentation in the time that we have. As you know, and members of the public know, and this board knows, we looked at this parcel when it came on the market. Just the price tag of it, it was just so exorbitant that we couldn't afford it and would have to go to the ballot with it. So we looked at ways to acquire it, and I know we went back and forth many times. I'm glad you mentioned the A and R lots, I think, you know, people have talked to us and said, oh, another developer could, you know, buy this and maybe make a similar deal. But to me, those six A and R lots, if someone's going to buy those, those are gone. And as you said, looking across from Ridge Hill, and they were marketed separately. So I think what's so great about this deal is getting those lots in addition to this this large parcel. And I think this is probably, you know, as long as I've been on the board, the most creative way to do this and preserve what we think is as a legacy preservation. You know, I've been asked about that land again, you know, it's pretty much dead land you hear. But the way I look at it, if developer bought it or you bought it, you could actually say, oh, it's going to be part of the association, and it's only going to be available for the association to use and no public access. So this deal gives us so much, it really checks all the boxes for me as far as what we want to get from it. And I think that type of development and age directed would work perfectly in that place. And we get some affordability there too as a kicker. So I just, as you know, all for this deal, I know this board worked hard, Mary Ann worked, you know, very hard on this deal. I just, lastly, this will be a public process as we go forward. It will go to the zoning board of appeals, and there will be some due diligence that they're going to have you do as far as maybe studies or layout and a lot more in the weeds than we're getting into tonight. But I just want people to be aware that there are many faces to this this development, and there's going to be a way in from town boards, committees, and of course, the zoning board of appeals with their decision. So if you could just talk a little bit about the buffer, and I know you have that cut out, and we're not going to hold anything in stone tonight, but I think your your idea is also to give a buffer along the Whitman Road parcels in the frontage as well.
Yeah, I could speak to that. Let me let me react to two things that you said. One is, I think those two, three acre parcels are critical. They are really the missing teeth in the smile along Charles River. Once they're gone, they're gone. And, you know, I suppose you drive by them, they'll be lovely houses, and people invest handsomely in them, and 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 that's a nice look. But from a conservation perspective, and that contiguousness on both sides of the road, they really are the missing teeth. And I've heard the comment, I haven't heard it referred to as dead land on the on the lower side. For sure, there are, it's, you know, there's floodlines, there's river setbacks, the conservation and so on and so forth. I, as a professional in this business for many years, I'm always amazed at where people get a right to build something. So the notion that nothing could be built on the lower side is hopeful, but I don't think it's realistic. I think there is enough will and money. Someone's going to figure out how to put a really big house down there, and they'll be patient enough to get there. Yeah, so I didn't highlight on our development plan, but if I have lots of plans here presently, the the layout that we have has a hundred foot setback along the whole rear of the Whitman Road lots, all the way down from from Charles River Road, running all the way down to the river, wherever the development parcel we we crafted as we laid out the seventy units, we started with, we want a hundred foot buffer. And then along the other side, it's variable, it grows to about a hundred and eighty. One of the thoughts was, we wanted to maintain the Kettles' experience as they came down the driveway so that their experience coming into it wasn't influenced by this, you know, seventy units. If they could, by and large, experience the same wooded feeling driving down their driveway by by maintaining a buffer along that eastern edge of the development parcel such that, sure, there'll be some, when leaves fall off the trees, can you see lights, can you see structures? Yes, but is it exposed, you know, clear cut to the edge? So the development parcel, as we're thinking about it at twenty eight acres in round numbers, is approximately fourteen to fifteen acres of developed area and fourteen to fifteen acres of buffer area around the perimeter. It would be no touch, wouldn't wouldn't be a CR, but it would be some sort of set aside, no touch or very limited touch. When I say very limited touch, there are instances where a utility line has to course through something or a grading, topographical grading, grading encroaches into it. But the intent is, is to try to put, if you will, a donut around the edge, the perimeter of the development area to the east, to the west, along Charles River Road. I think I think my setback was two hundred feet off of Charles River. So again, you might, well, you're not going to see it, you're driving too fast to do this and focus. So again, it's sort of lessons learned from other projects we've done. And that would be part of what I would come forward with, you know, in a formal plan. And we have a pretty, you know, pretty advanced schematic present.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was a long answer.
Heidi. Thank you for that presentation, that was excellent. I'm so excited about this opportunity, and I appreciate your involvement in it. And I just want to, for the record, make sure that everyone understands that Northland Residential is different from the Northland commercial that is currently building everything in Newton. I think that's an important distinction and one that I've seen confused in several communities, I just want to point that out. I really appreciate the idea of age directed and especially including affordable housing here. I wonder if you could just speak a little bit about building sustainably and what kind of commitment you might have.
That, thank you for that, for your comments. Yes, we are not Northland Investment, and Northland Investment is not us. We did come out of the same family, but I've been out of that family since nineteen ninety four, so it's a long time ago. Thank you for the sustainability question, a good one and a timely one. We've always tried to embrace this, you know, sort of environmental stewardship, mostly through the land development perspective and doing these open space clusters, that that is really Northland's roots going way, way back. And my mentor Frank Stewart's, you know, passion. Along the years, we've embraced lead for homes, green building, with with varying success, frankly, from a from a market acceptance. I would say more recently, if you go over to Wellesley, we're carbon less. We're air source heat pump, heated and cooled, we're air source heat pump, hot water generated for our home. We're using induction cooking equipment for for that so that we're we're carbon less or carbon light or no carbon at all. At our McLean project that is coming out of the ground this fall, we have committed to the energy committee as far as our permitting there that, again, heat and cool electric electrically has to do it, it's built into our permit. Hot water generation has to be produced electrically. We're not, we're actually not going to run the gas main into the development. We do have some demand, mind you, for propane cooking stoves and a little bit of demand for propane fire, gas log fireplaces. That's where we get pushback. The building envelope is, frankly, the the building codes have advanced sufficiently that the building envelope is is very tight. We have not embraced to date solar or passive house or geothermal. We haven't found the right mix of market acceptance and cost and production costs. So we walk into it, you know, in an informed way as best we can. I can say, Peter Crabtree, who I mentioned before, down on our project in Norwell, it's going to be apartments, it's going to be all electric, and Mashpee Commons is going to be all electric. So we're moving, you know, as quickly as we can away from the use of carbon. We're not yet moving toward creation.
Any other questions?
Can we, can we make sure that the Kettles, can we ask Kettles?
So actually, the the Kettles have already asked us if we, they would be permitted to still mow the paths. And Dr. Kettle said that he actually considers it his spiritual offering to the land. So we we hope that Dr. Kettle was able to do that for many more years, that's his wish also. There you are, Dr. Kettle, good to see you, thank you. So so yes, great question and and something that we're hoping will happen. So all looks good, Kate.
Just note that we will be having a neighborhood meeting, and we will extend it to Charles River Street Butters. It's not just just Whitman Road, so the other Butters as well. And that that will be going out shortly.
Shortly, all right. What?
Sightwalks. Sightwalks.
So the sightwalks are for town meeting members. I think we just sent notice out today to town meeting members on the sightwalks. So, yes.
You also online.
There is an FAQ for the property that has just gone up today and for town meeting members. I'm expecting that we'll have the usual videos up by the end of the week for them as well. But it's an exciting project, it's really exciting in that it lets us preserve this open space for the community and going forward in perpetuity, which we are really excited about being able to do. It is gorgeous out there.
It's not if, when we pull this off, this is a real winner.
Yep.
In every regard, and I I know I have a self-serving, you know, position in it, but from, if you look at it really from a high level, it is a, it is, it is really a good thing.
Well, we believed in working with you all along that we had the best offer for preserving the most amount of land and making a really beautiful place there. And I'm grateful to you for partnering with the town to make that possible. So we'll look forward to it happening, so.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
All right, that brings us to the climate action items that are on the special town meeting warrant. I see Stephen Frail and Nikhil here this evening, if you could come join us just for a quick update as we're headed into town meeting for everybody. We're good, how are you? Hopefully, you were excited by that sustainable building plan that you just heard, so that's a a piece of the project.
Yep.
So where would you like me to begin?
So the board has a considerable amount of background that's been provided by the Climate Planning Action Committee. And so I'm grateful to all the work that you guys have done to pull this together. Really, there are two warrant items, if you just want to basically, I think, briefly cover what those two warrant items are that are requested for town meeting. And I think we'll give the opportunity for people to ask some questions.
Great, great. So yeah, I'll start with the the shorter, the funding one. So we are requesting funding of fifty five thousand dollars for the hiring of a consultant, a climate action plan consultant, which is somebody who would help with with the writing and development of our plan. We have made a lot of progress this year, and we're going to continue making progress through the end of the year. We'll be kicking off some working groups this Monday. And we're expecting the work of those working groups to carry right through the end of the year and into January. At that point, we'll probably have exhausted our expertise, and that's when we think we need the consultant. And so what a consultant would be providing to us is support with the technical analysis, feasibility, level of effort for some of the actions that we're proposing, ensuring that we're looking at all the best practices with respect to actions, climate action plans, and then also helping with the the templates, so the implementation templates. How do we get to a point where we're actually able to implement one of these action plans? There's also a greenhouse gas inventory that we we've done, we're looking for a deeper level, a deeper dive on that from the consultant's perspective. And then they'll also help with the actual drafting of the plan, so a lot of the the technical diagrams, what they call a what do they call the burn down list?
The pathways?
The pathways, the various pathways to net zero over the course of the next few decades.
The other thing with the, rather than this just being a, another report, as some have said, first of all, the consultant, we're looking at somebody with an outside perspective who can say, well, this worked, this didn't work here because it's important to get that perspective and really focus on actionable items rather than just a book that sits on the shelf.
So I think one of the other points that I would make is that we are bringing this request now because the committee's ready now, the committee has actually spent an intense six months kind of getting started and getting ready and and setting up these working groups that are about to kick off. The town is in need of a climate action plan for us to be able to apply for grants in the future to help fund some of these initiatives that we're planning for. So in short, fifty five thousand dollars is money that we're spending as a down payment for future grant monies that we need this to be able to apply for.
Right, and there's quite a bit of funding that's out there now with the new investment, I'm sorry, Inflation Reduction Act, as well as some state law that is putting forth some more grants for some of the sustainable actions that we're looking to do, so.
And this will also prioritize actions so that we've got a list and then town staff can say, okay, there's a grant that can fund this or that.
You know, it strikes me that for members of the public who are listening to this, often when we're having discussions, we're talking about questions like this as it relates to the municipal government. But we're talking about a climate action plan that's literally for the whole town.
Right.
And that's part of what makes this more complicated than just dealing with the town's particular infrastructure.
That's right, so just about two and a half percent of our greenhouse gas emissions comes from municipal sources. So ninety seven and a half percent is outside of the direct control of the town. So there's quite a quite a bit of actions that'll be along the lines of how do we bring carrots and sticks around reducing greenhouse gas emissions over the next few decades.
Let me just ask, any questions related to the climate action plan funding or an article?
No, Madam Chair, I would just note that it is something that Town Meeting actually wants us to make movement on. And, you know, I'm curious what comes out of it. I'm cautious on the approach when we do get it back of what we're going to do. But I think it's the right step for what we heard from Town Meeting to make this step and see where at least we are and where we could go. So, thank you.
All right, I should start by saying, this is a rare occasion, actually, where we have a husband wife duo here. So kudos to you two, and thank you for your service to the town. I'm not sure, is it a first, I'm not sure, it may have happened some time before, but it's rare, so thank you to both of you.
And I would just like to say that I think, you know, I understand there's a family connection here. But nonetheless, I think this is extremely well thought out, and certainly more than a down payment, I would call this an investment in Needham's future. One of the things that I think Needham does really well is planning. We study, we take careful steps, and this is part of that process. It's really important for us to understand not only where we are, but where we're trying to get to and what the steps are so that we can execute those steps, and it isn't sort of willy nilly. This is an important step, so I'm glad we're doing this.
Me too.
Great, all right, and the second one.
Yeah, so we can move to the community electricity aggregation. So one of the first votes that the Climate Action Plan Committee took was to recommend a CEA, a community electricity aggregation as something that the town could pursue. And a CEA is really just a way for the town to negotiate on behalf of its residences and businesses potentially more favorable rates and potentially greener electricity. In Needham, roughly a quarter of our greenhouse gas emissions come from our electricity, from the burning of fossil fuels. So natural gas, coal, oil, that generates electricity that puts these lights on. It's about a quarter of our total greenhouse gas emissions. The state has put forth a law that allows municipalities to enter in these CEAs to negotiate with utilities for greener electricity or more favorable rates or balance of the two. And so we think this is a great place to start. We think it's something that the town can act on in the next year, year or two, and really start to, you know, make progress on greenhouse gas emissions.
So this item is a little unusual in that it requires, in fact, a vote of town meeting for the town to enter into any negotiations with a vendor for this purpose. So this is recommended specifically so that the town can begin this discussion. And I think this is also a great example of the prioritization of, you know, the, the larger impact items. As you said, 25%, you know, being prioritized toward the top of the list, we know will take work, but big impact from, from a vote from town meeting and from being able to bring this in.
Right. So the state does require the affirmative vote of town meeting in order to even begin negotiations, to begin working with a consultant on a CEA. It does not mean that we have to complete a CEA. We can test the market and decide that we want to wait. But we might end up finding a deal that we think works for the town. If that happens, there's a lengthy process, including there's state approval in order to, to move it forward. There's public hearings. There's opportunities for, for the public at large to, to weigh in and, and comment on it. And there's also lots of protections for rate payers as well. So one of the features of the CEA is that it can, and anybody in town can participate, but anybody can also opt out with no cost, no penalty. So, you know, if, if we negotiate a good rate and everybody's excited about it, we'll get a lot of participation. And that could lower our greenhouse gas emissions as well as potentially save people some money. If the rates aren't so favorable, we won't get a lot of uptake and it won't be a very successful program. So one of the things the town should be looking at as they pursue this is how to balance the, the cost with the benefits on the greenhouse gas emissions.
So, and, and you're right, we don't know where these rates have the potential to come out or cautiously optimistic because while it seems like it's an uncertain energy environment, but we did just see a recent deal by Somerville that was still favorable for the residents of their city. So we will cross our fingers. Marcus?
Thank you. And thank you both for being here. I know what Mary Ann just said, we don't know the rates just yet, but is there any estimated cost or anything as far as how other towns have done it and where have they fallen within that range of what we should expect the rates to possibly be between? And I know we're so far away, Town Meeting has to approve this, but as far as hypothetically that happens, what does it look like as far as what the numbers could be or is there a range?
I work in the energy management procurement field and I'm not going to give you a number, but looking at what the electricity market is doing, 2023 is up here. Right now, we're up here, 24, 25 are much lower. So it's a reasonable expectation that market, by the time this gets through state approval, which will easily be a year, I think situates been waiting too. We should be in a better market position than we are now.
Okay. Thank you. Historically, Mr. Nelson, a lot of towns have shown that the people in the CEA are saving even relative to the, the basic energy service. But there's no guarantee for that because the basic energy service resets every six months. A CEA is typically for two years or three years. And so you'll have a guaranteed rate over that time. Now, if the basic energy rates go up and you're in that flat rate, you're going to be making out over the life of the cycle. But if something happens, you know, COVID, right? Where suddenly there's less demand for energy, you could see rates drop in the basic service. And that could potentially even go below what your negotiated flat rate is. So there's no promise of savings in a CEA. You do minimize volatility however. And so if you get to a place where that's a rate that, that, that seems to work for most people, they won't see the spikes and the drops over the course of the contract.
And we're moving as a town, it's a long-term benefit regardless, kind of entering into this and, oh. Possibly entering into this in if Town Meeting were to approve this, whether it goes up or down to where it is, what we're trying to do as a town of Needham, as we're trying to move, move towards net zero and all of these things, this is a benefit.
There is a greenhouse gas benefit, but I do, I would say we still need to balance cost versus impact.
Okay.
What a lot of towns do is they look, so one backup a little bit. About 20% of our energy, our electricity today is coming from what's called class one renewables, like wind and solar. And that's mandated by, demanded by the state. A lot of towns and cities are going incrementally higher than that. So maybe it's 25% or maybe it's 30%. And by staying in a bit of a small band, they can keep the, the costs really competitive. If, if it was really just about the greenhouse gas emissions, you'd go all the way to 100, but that might be cost prohibitive, right? And so you have to figure out what's the right balance. And the consultants that we would work with, they're going to help us understand that and try to find that right balance.
And I want to say, when the consultants work with us, this is also a conversation we'll be having with the town as we're thinking about what levels are we going to contract for. So.
Right.
All right. So there are opportunities down the road where we'll be having input.
There's extensive outreach that the consultants do.
Right.
As a part of that. Provide several levels, several different levels of service that some are greener than others to allow choice to the consumer.
Right. There's usually a, a basic default, which is a little bit greener than the basic. And then there's one that's an opt-up, which might be a lot greener than the basic.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. And thank you for the work that you put into this. I've been going back and forth on this and I'll tell you why. It's, you know, the idea of opting out versus opting in. I know there's not a, a way for people to opt in. And so everyone is in. And then I think of people, I know you've heard this before and then you have the pushback, but you do have seniors, I have family in their 90s who, if the rate does get to be a certain point, they might not know that they can opt out. Or the town and our municipal buildings, I remember when I was on the finance committee, we saved a lot of money with those rates as they came down and really helped. So locking in a rate for three years to me is risky. And I know you can opt out, but of course I don't think the town's going to then opt out. You know, that would kind of be the wrong message to send, right? So I guess that's my concern of people actually being able to opt out. The town being in a position of kind of a long-term hold for three years, where I know other people have talked to me about, you know, you can always opt into these greener electric on your own and maybe do more of a PSA to, to have people do that on their own instead of kind of be pushed to this and then have to opt out. So you've answered the question in the FAQ, you know, not looking to debate it back and forth, but just more of my concern of what those years and the volatility of the energy market, how is it going to impact our residents in those years?
Yeah. Those are good, good points. There's two things that I think you're addressing. One is helping residents understand what their rights are. And there's actually a lot of requirements by state law that the town reach every rate payer with, and with information on, there's a specific format on what the rates are, how they compare to the basic rates, how to opt out. And so that's, that's required by law. And there's also annual reports where the town would be required to, again, educate everybody on what the rates are, how they've changed in the marketplace, what their rights are. And that is done with the consultant as well. So there's multiple channels that we can go through from that perspective. The second question is more about the town's participation, and I think that's a separate question. I don't think it's automatic that the town's electricity would be included in the CEA. That would have to be a decision made. This, this creation of a CEA does not automatically sweep the town in, especially if the town already has a contract. If there's a long.
Anyone who's on a contract is automatically kept out. So this is really more toward the homeowner, small businesses, TripAdvisor, for example.
Okay.
May not be, you know, large users probably are on their own.
Madam Chair, how long is our contract? When is there? Okay. And is it something at that time we might? Okay. And is that something at the time then we might look into this program or is it pretty much a separate?
Oh, we would explore it.
Would explore it. Okay. Because I think it would be hard at that time saying to our residents, you have to do this, but we don't have to do it.
Right.
So that's where I'm concerned. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Quick question. How many towns in Massachusetts have?
So there's 175 roughly at last count are, are taking advantage of the CEA statute.
And I think there are another 20 that are in process. And I think we have around 20 municipal electric plants that aren't included. So out of, you're saying you're probably 60% of the eligible towns are in it or in the process.
Okay.
Right. So we're not a trailblazer here.
No.
All right. We are clearly in a second or third or fourth wave. I'm not sure which. Okay. And, and frankly, the feedback that we heard from Newton about their experience is that their town residents have been absolutely pleased with this. So we hope that our town residents will have the same experience. Okay. Great. Thank you for coming in on this.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. That brings us to our joint meeting with the Planning Board and the Housing Working Group. And I am expecting a number of people to come join us right now. Salutations to all of you.
Yes. Large group. Hi, Adam.
You will need to sort of pass around the microphones if different people are going to speak. Thank you to all for joining us tonight. I know that this has been, I think, a similar sort of six months of hard work in the planning, maybe a little bit longer than six months now.
Since October.
Since October, a year. Okay. So, and so at this point, you're ready to share sort of the preliminary thinking, at least from the Housing Working Group, with where you are with updating the plan and a little bit about what the mass communities kind of impact has been and some other things. So am I turning it over to Eugene as the?
All right. Natasha Spada and I are co-chairs of the Housing Plan Working Group. And our, our staff, a primary staff person is Karen Sounaborg, who's the town's housing services coordinator. And Karen has prepared a PowerPoint that she's going to start out our presentation with. And also, of course, I, let me recognize the members of the Select Board who served on the Housing Plan Working Group. Marcus Nelson from the beginning, and then we had Dan Matthews for a few months until Heidi was elected and agreed to serve. And it's been wonderful to have Heidi. And, and so then the others who are here at the table, the Housing Plan Working Group is Oscar Muritz, who served with me and Heidi on the zoning subgroup. And we'll be presenting zoning recommendations. Ed Cosgrove, who's on our Board of Health. Emily Cooper, who's a citizen at large, and will be presenting on housing development and preservation strategies. And of course Natasha, who's been an enormous colleague here on this, on this group, and will be presenting for the capacity building strategies. We have these three subgroups. And of course, you know, our planning board chairman, Adam.
And. Adam doesn't need a last name. Just Adam. Adam Block. No, you are so great. I was so impressed with you.
Rhonda, of course. Rhonda. You know, so used to seeing people on Zoom with their names right there at the bottom. So, so let us start with Karen's presentation. And I'll jump in when the presentation gets to zoning strategies.
And Lee, we have Karen Sounaborg is, is on the line on Zoom. Lee Newman. And Alexandra Cle was here? Oh, there she is.
Yes.
And then Avery Newton with Affordable Housing. Okay.
And let me mention in the audience, Housing, Housing Board Chairman Reg Foster, although he's not a member of the committee, he has been a strong participant and submitted very wonderful comments on the plan.
I think I also saw that Mike O'Brien from the, uh, the school committee is also a member of your committee. And I think he's also online as well.
Oh, if Mike O'Brien is an attendee, he should be a participant.
And Carol.
Oh, yes. And Carol Faschetti, Finance Committee.
Good evening here, present.
I, I'm here as well.
Great.
Good.
So, so shall we get started with the PowerPoint?
Yes, Karen.
Can we move on to the next slide? Great. Thank you so much. I'm going to provide a very basic background on the draft housing plan. And then others will delve into the specific recommendations as to strategies that are included in the plan. In regard to the purpose, the town's existing housing plan, as you know, is 15 years old. So it was time to obtain some updated information on demographic shifts, economic conditions and housing characteristics and trends to, to look at housing needs and to really start planning for the town's future housing agenda. The key components of the project included, very importantly, the Housing Plan Working Group, the Planning Board Appointed Representatives from key town boards and committees, as well as three at-large members to coordinate the planning process. And the working group met largely on a monthly basis. A really important focus of the planning process was community outreach. There were a number of efforts to try to really promote active participation of local leaders, housing stakeholders and residents to various activities. One being a early on public education and listening session on January 27th of this year. We provided some very basic information on housing issues and then kind of an open forum for people to offer their perspectives on local housing needs, priorities and suggested strategies. We then held a community housing workshop on March 24th that also presented some basic housing information. And then divided participants into various breakout groups to discuss some questions and issues in more detail. The group also sponsored a community housing survey townwide. And the working group has managed some dedicated webpages related to the materials and general information that has been showcased as part of the planning process. And very importantly was the formation of subgroups. It was acknowledged that there was a great deal of expertise on the working group and that some members expressed some interest in being more involved in the preparation of the housing plan. So the members broke into three subgroups related to three different topics. One being zoning, another being housing development and preservation, work towards housing production efforts, and another towards capacity building, how the town can boost its capacity, better promote housing. So next slide. This just provides an update of where we are on the SHI. The 2020 census identified 11,891 year on housing units. And of these, 1,410 or 11.86% are on or eligible for the subsidized housing inventory. A very important component of the SHI units are those units that are managed by the Needham Housing Board, including 360 deeply affordable units. Plus, they manage 120 Section 8,040 centers that are also very important for some of the community's most vulnerable residents. SHI is heavily oriented for rental, as it is usually in those communities, only 17 ownership units. And all units in Chapter 40B rental projects count as part of the SHI. And that involves 600. And that involves 668 market rentals, which are basically comprised 47% of the SHI units compared to 742 actually affordable units that meet state income and asset requirements or 53% of the SHI units. And that's equivalent to 6.24% of the year-round housing stock, just the affordable units. But it's widely recognized that new rentals have really provided a boost to diversify in the housing stock. And also, the town has a really pretty comfortable cushion with respect to the SHI. We take about 2,200 new housing units to be built without any affordable ones to get down to that 10% affordability SHI level. And it's also worth noting that another 435 units, affordable units, would be required to reach the 10% threshold if the market units weren't included on the SHI. Guiding principles, these are aspirational goals that really guide the strategies that are proposed in the town's future housing agenda. And the working group looked at the 2007 Affordable Housing Plan Housing Goals and refined them during a meeting as follows. To build a more diverse and welcoming community that includes residents of all ages, races, ethnicities, gender identification, sexual orientation, religion, abilities, and stages of life. To be a community having broad social and economic diversity. To be in an engaged community that actively shapes a vision for its housing future that is sensitive to regional considerations. To ensure that new housing is appropriate to its location and context. To provide opportunity for different housing types of a broad range of size and price. To enhance the vitality of our commercial areas to encourage walkability, commuting, shopping, services, socializing, and health. Next slide. The housing needs assessment includes some detailed information from a wide variety of resources on demographics, economics, housing characteristics and trends. And through distilling that information, it's really clear that it identified that there were unmet housing needs across a wide range of incomes and types of households. And then the plan also, through the distillation of housing information and other considerations, provides some targeted priority needs related to production goals with a split of an estimated 80% of new units be produced as rentals, as opposed to 20% for homeownership as starter housing or opportunity for downsizing. And considerations, there are numbers of considerations that are included in the housing needs assessment, but foremost, almost all state and federal subsidies are directed to rentals, making it more cost-effective to respond to the community's most vulnerable residents and to leverage the town's limited resources to the greatest extent possible. And also with the MBTA Community Guidelines focusing on multifamily housing, rental is a clear opportunity. And once again, all units in Chapter 40B Rental Development Town is part of the SHI, which keeps us ahead of the curve. And homeownership project development must rely on internal subsidies where the market units actually cross-subsidize the more affordable ones and/or with CPA to fill high, and we could say, rising affordability gaps. The plan also, and certainly it was highlighted during our planning process, that it was important to integrate handicapped accessibility and resiliency supportive services into new development with a goal of, no, of integrating at least 20% of one-bedroom units with such accommodations and 10% for all other units. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Jean McKnight to go over the draft zoning strategies.
Thank you, Karen. And I should have noted before that our longtime Planning Board member, Adam Block, is here. Excuse me, Paul Alpert is here. And Paul, would you like to join us at the table? You're okay, all right. Well, of course, our work was very much informed by the MBTA Communities Act. That is, the State Zoning Act, Chapter 40A, a new section was enacted, Section 3A, that requires all the Eastern Massachusetts communities served by the MBTA to have a certain percentage of the units in their community to zone such that it might be possible to develop new units in that community. And for Needham, we were categorized, of course, as we should be, as a commuter rail community, meaning, according to this law, that 15%, the guidelines that were issued by the Department of Housing and Community Development in August, that we are required to zone for 15% of our existing housing units. And 15% is almost 1,800 units, 1,781 units. What does that mean in terms of acres? Well, the MBTA Guidelines has to have two specific acreage requirements. You have to have at least one area that's 25 contiguous acres. Now, there can be a public way between one lot and another, but it has to be contiguous. They also say 50 acres, but 50 acres is irrelevant for Needham. Considering the amount, the fact that we are already a highly developed community with a lot of housing units, and we have a lot of acreage within the four commuter rail stations, our requirement, if we keep to 18 units per acre, which is what the, excuse me, which is, I'll go on and talk about our Apartment A1 zoning, which is what we're focused on to meet this requirement at 18 units per acre, we have to rezone or have already zoned, as we have considerable acreage, 120 acres. So how are we going to do that? We can do it. And we can do it in a, and I want to put now, put up on the slide, yes. This is, and these marvelous visuals were done for our zoning subgroup, for the Housing Plan Working Group, by Oscar Muritz, who's an architect, and he has a skill that I completely lack, that is visual presentation of information. And what this is, is what you might call our spine, that is Highland Avenue going from north to south, going from Needham Heights to Needham Junction. And we have many areas, particularly in the Heights, that are already zoned for Apartment A1. The area abutting Rosemary, and I'm calling Needham Heights kind of where Rosemary Street ends, is the divider between the Heights and the center. But what we have is Rosemary, you can barely see Rosemary Lake there, right above that yellow block. And up there, you have Rosemary Lake Apartments, the Petrini Development. And you have Rosemary Ridge condominium where I happen to live. You go farther north along Highland Avenue, and you have what's now called Hamilton Highlands, an apartment development, which is zoned Apartment A1. So you, and you also, when we get to the center, you also have the the Highlands, I think it's called, is that lovely townhouse development that's right in the, in the center. Next to Emery Grover. So that's what we started with as a base. We have Apartment A1, we have a large number of acres, we don't have a contiguous 25-acre parcel. We have a lot of other opportunities. Some parcels that we could rezone Apartment A1, for example, focusing still on Heights, you have the Avery School condominium, large apartment condominium. I don't know how it ever got developed as a condominium, it's an old school, without it being rezoned, but it's zoned for single residence B. Easy, rezonate Apartment A1, that's already how it's used. And so there are other opportunities like that, such as Stephen Palmer, which also was an old school used as multifamily apartments. And we know that that's going to go back into the hands of the town within the next five years, and the town will be planning for its future use. So that was the easy strategy, oh, we'll rezone this, we'll rezone that Apartment A1. But what about our industrial and business zones that currently don't allow any multifamily housing at all? For example, staying in the Heights, along Hillside Avenue, you have across from Rosemary Ridge, between the railroad tracks and Hillside Avenue, the industrial district. Allow multifamily housing by right. At, oh, by the way, the MDAT guidelines require that the housing be allowed by right. As is allowed by right in our Apartment A1 district and always has since it was created in 1980. But you have to do that too in the industrial, so if we add as a use that's permitted in certain districts, industrial districts, business districts, multifamily housing at the Apartment A1 density, that would add acreage that we have zoned for that, for that use. Now, will there actually be development in those industrial and business areas? Whether, that remains to be seen, but at least we will have complied with the law. And then, so there you have it. For the various areas, we're talking about rezoning in the Heights, we actually have a total area of 68.25 acres. And we have our first contiguous area, and that is the area with the Petrini Apartments, Rosemary View, the industrial and the business district on Hillside Avenue of 31.32 acres. There we go. So now we go down to the center. And we've got another business strip that goes from Rosemary Street to May Street, our familiar business strip that has Sudbury Farms, has the Bertucci's Plaza. That we can likewise allow multifamily housing at A1 zoning in that business strip. And across the street from it, as I said, the Highlands is already, the Highlands that a town has apartment, that's already zoned Apartment A1, and that zone goes all the way down already and includes the Emery Grover School and St. Joseph's Church. Now, we are also talking about a couple of other churches that we might rezone for Apartment A1. I forgot to mention them, that kind of on the edge of the central business district, but we're already doing that for St. Joseph's, no harm, right? So we bring that zoning across May Street and pick up a little bit of the St. Joseph's School property, and there I mentioned Stephen Palmer. With skip, although that map makes it look like we're also including Greensfield, we're not doing that. But we're going, then we're going down to Great Plain Avenue and talking about rezoning 888 Great Plain Avenue, the old nursery for Apartment A1. And the Baptist and Christen Schein churches next to it. So by that means, then in the center, we end up with an acreage of 20, and it's contiguous of 25.57 acres. So we've got another contiguous area. Now, we've got our center business district, we're just pictured in blue there. We're kind of leaving that alone. Our vision for our center business district is a mixture of first floor, you know, retail and restaurants and service establishments with apartments above. We only have one example of that at the full, allow four acres, and that is on Dedham Avenue. But we don't want to change that. And that means it will not be counted for MBTA communities because you have to allow standalone multifamily. But that's okay. We want to control our own development in our center the way we want it and the way we zoned for about 15 years ago. You know, this, so then we get to our third area, and that is the junction. So we already have, you know, Chestnut Street Business Area, in which this combination of multifamily housing at four stories is allowed currently by special permit. But we would allow, see, we see the junction as being somewhat different from the center. It's a little bit more auto-oriented. And although we're talking about transit-oriented multifamily development, where we expect people will walk to the train, many, many residents will. We're making a kind of a distinction between the downtown and Chestnut Street in that regard, that we could allow standalone multifamily housing in that Chestnut Street Business District. And we could extend that over to the east side of of Chestnut Street, so it would be both sides. Now, there is a parcel right at the tip, and you recall, you may recall, Hartney and Graymont Site was considered for rezoning. And a developer had initiated and sought the rezoning for, I think it was first proposing a five-story building, then went down to four stories. We're proposing, let's rezone that parcel for Apartment A1. But it's three stories, you know, Apartment A1 is three-story buildings, 18 units per acre, it's not highly dense, it's not high-rise. So that's how we're going to do it. We're going to meet that 120 acres, the total we've got is 123.1. And we've got three locations where we have contiguous 25 acres. So that's my presentation on complying with MBTA community strategies. I want to just mention a couple of other zoning strategies if we go back to the slide. Well, we can put this one up again at the time we have discussion, but on inclusionary zoning. In many of our zones in Needham now, where we allow multifamily housing, either as part of mixed-use housing or I think it's mostly where we have mixed-use housing presently. We have a requirement for 12.5% of the units to be affordable, but not everywhere. For example, recently, the Planning Board approved a new eight-unit multi-story development in the Hillside Avenue Business District on West Street, if perhaps driven by and see it being built. Eight units, 12.5% means, means one affordable unit in an eight-unit building. We had none because we don't require affordable housing in that zone. But we want to have it everywhere. Now, the MBTA guidelines say that you can only have 10% affordable housing. You know, these guidelines aren't about affordability, really. They're about providing housing for the Eastern Massachusetts area to spur economic development generally, because we have a housing shortage. And the thought is it will bring housing prices down. But they're saying you can't have an affordability limit higher than 10% unless you've already got it established in your town. But we do have it established in these certain zones. We're hoping we can win the argument, therefore, we can use 12.5%. But that's the idea, we're going to, we're going to make sure we have that everywhere. We're also talking about, usually you don't begin until you've got six units. All right, if you've got six units, then you average up, and so you have one affordable. But what about three to five-unit housing developments? Couldn't they put a financial contribution that's proportionate to the cost of actually providing the unit? providing the unit? For example, if you have a four unit multifamily development, why not pay 50% of the cost of a, of a unit to enter the Housing Trust Fund? What about subdivisions? Now, my 15 years on the planning board, there haven't been that many, but there have been a few that have been more than six unit subdivisions. What about requiring one house in a subdivision to be an affordable, to be an affordable house? And going further, if it's a, it's a three, four, or five house subdivision, how about a contribution? So we're thinking about that. Now, the other thing is broaden the eligibility requirements as part of the ADU bylaw. Now, we adopted an ADU bylaw a few years back, and we've only had eight units. It's very strict and strict particularly in a couple of ways. Only a close family member or a caretaker can live in the, in the accessory dwelling unit. And it requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Now, we have other strict requirements that we're thinking we want to continue, but there's those two. Why not allow somebody who owns a single family home, perhaps an older homeowner who's struggling to pay the taxes and the utilities and the upkeep, to create an affordable housing unit and rent that out to whoever that owner wishes to rent it to. And so that would give the owner more options. Now, we'd still keep our strict requirements, eight, no more than 850 square feet, no more than one bedroom. You have to have for building code compliance, an exit for emergency exit that goes right into the main dwelling room. So the owner has to be very comfortable with the person they're renting to. Six month minimum lease, you're not going to have, you know, whatever they call them, Airbnbs. Okay? So all of those rules we would keep. But why not allow the person to go to the building inspector, show that they meet all the requirements and get the building permit without having a public hearing before the zoning board of appeals? However, this one of our requirements, and that is to make sure that the unit, that the building, the building that's proposed with the unit now, has the appearance of, maintains the appearance of a single family dwelling unit. It's kind of a judgment that, I don't know, what we're thinking is that might go beyond what a building inspector typically looks at. Because it's not clearly objective. And we have a design review committee. So we're talking about having the building plans reviewed by the design review committee who would make a recommendation to the building inspector. And then the building inspector would act accordingly. So that, and then one more thing, we now don't allow accessory dwelling units in accessory buildings, like if you have a garage or a barn, no, we just don't allow it. Many other communities allow it. If we want to allow it, I think we would want to have a special permit for that. And we might start out by limiting only to existing accessory buildings, not newly built accessory buildings. So that's what we're talking about for ADUs. Now, consider options for promoting new development in appropriate locations. A couple of, a couple of things I'll mention, and then we'll move on to the other presenters There are a couple of areas in town that is zoned for single residence A that requires one acre. Now, you may recall that along Hunting Road, a property owner brought before town meeting a proposal to rezon that strip to SRB, and town meeting did not vote for it. They were afraid that that person might acquire all the land, which seems quite unlikely. And Oscar studied it carefully, and with that strip, you really can only get three more units, even if you did that, even if you've got all the units and put them all together and divided them all up. And what's wrong with three more units? What's wrong with a few more small lots? So that's our thinking here. And we're looking at that same Hunting Road site, plus a site farther along that where Hunting Road goes into Greendale, that similarly between, well, it's between Greendale and the highway, and similarly developed with small lots. And then up towards Wellesley, north of North Hill, there's a neighborhood that, that has, it's, excuse me, Brookside Road, it's between Brookside Road and Forest Street, and then it goes up Brookside Road towards Wellesley and includes Clark Road and Rolling Lane. That also appears to have been developed with relatively small lots, and yet it is zoned, single residence. So we're looking at that, we're putting it out as an idea. So there we are. That's what I want to present as zoning strategies. And now, on that same slide, consider options to better control teardown activity. Emily Cooper is going to present those options as well as other housing development and preservation strategies. And Karen will move to the next slide as she presents some of them.
Thanks, Jean. And thanks to you all for having us here tonight. It's a pleasure to be able to show you our thoughts and our ideas and our strategies and recommendations. They are draft, and we're still hoping to get, you know, your thoughts and feedback on it. I'd say, you know, as we said, that we split into subgroups, and our subgroup kind of focused on, I'd say about five areas, one being teardowns, the Needham Housing Authority, the needs of older adults, people with disabilities and other special needs, and just sort of affordable housing opportunities overall. So, yeah.
I think what they want up on the screen is slide number seven. I mean, excuse me, it's now slide eight, that it, that's right.
Thanks, Jean.
Housing Development Preservation Strategies.
Great. Thank you. So it, you know, when we, there aren't really fine lines between these subgroups. So you'll see on the zoning slide that was just there, there was a mention of teardowns. We definitely feel that this is an area that needs further exploration. Really recommending a work group that can dive in to look at FAR, can look at setbacks, tree removal bylaws, demo delay, possibly historic districts. But, but there was definitely a consensus that this is an area that needs further study and further investigation and, and possibly some action. But we are not at a point to say what that action is, and we think it probably needs a more in-depth group to, to really hone in on it. But recognizing, you know, it's definitely a heated issue, and there's no right or wrong, but, but looking at what other communities have done and seeing where Needham wants to be in that area, including what tools are at our disposal, you know, as I said, ranging from trees to historic districts to FAR, are, so that we can bring something back as a community and say, you know, where do we want to be in the area of teardowns? The second area, and I'm talking quickly because I know you have like a 200 page document in your binder, your binders you all have there, so, and we'll, I want to get Natasha a chance, but the Needham Housing Authority. And I know we have folks here, we all support their efforts to revitalize, their efforts to expand, their efforts, we want to make sure that they're accessing all state and local opportunities and funding opportunities, and they seem well positioned to do that. We want to make sure that they're also looking at all models. There are public-private partnerships between housing authorities and private developers that have been created, especially with the creation of new housing, that there are many, many housing developers, many nonprofit, some for profit, but nonprofit as well, housing developers who do this kind of housing development for low income, extremely low income people. It's their bread and butter. And I know that this is Needham Housing Authority's kind of first foray into new development, and it may be helpful to bring on another partner. I also think we want to be clear that, and, and make sure that whatever is created is along the same vein of people with disabilities, older adults, extremely low income, that we are adding to the, the portfolio of what Needham Housing Authority currently does. We also would encourage a review of other housing service partnerships. For example, there are housing that has been developed with the PACE program, which is the program for all inclusive care of the elderly, which is now available in Needham. And there are housing units set aside for people who would otherwise be in a nursing home. So really looking at what other housing developers in this space have done in other communities with the housing and service kind of partnership, we think, what we heard loud and clear was that would be something of interest to the community. Also, thinking about older adults, we want to make sure to, you know, continue the Small Repair Program program, the Safety at Home program, lots and lots of support for that. For people with disabilities, I think there, we heard clearly from CPAC that we want to look at what other communities have done and other models that we haven't done, and see if we can bring them here. Do we sponsor a forum with those, you know, with specialized housing in Brookline or, I can't remember the place on Cape Cod, bring them here and say, how did you get it done? And how do we do it here? Maybe that involves using CPA funds or something along those lines, but, but really sort of bringing other models and best practices here and seeing if they can be replicated. What I heard Karen say was we were 435 units of rental housing away from the true 10% of the SSHI. I don't know if I said that right, Karen, sorry. So our last recommendation is really around looking at all affordable housing opportunities. Looking at Stephen Palmer, it's come up already, and seeing we need to work, you know, can there be a working group to examine the potential to maximize its reuse for affordable housing? This is a great opportunity. Love to hear that Northland opportunity for the green space, but we also have this building now that's coming, and we know it's coming. What can we, what can we do? Newton did a great inventory of not just their public space, but every parking lot and private space and boarded up, you know, teardown building that they didn't even own to say, how is it zoned? Could it be used? What are the, what's, you know, what are the repercussions? Who would we need to call? And how much, you know, how much would it cost to buy that land? I'm not saying we're, we're made of money, but I think we don't really know what's out there except for what we own. And so knowing about what other private properties there are that might be of interest that aren't just us reacting to, oh, you know, I don't want to own a poultry farm anymore, so let's see what we do with it, but more that we have a clear stock and inventory similar to what they have in Newton. Lastly, I, there is a conversation about, again, bringing in housing developers, saying we're going to do the zoning changes, we're thinking about maybe consider waiving fees on affordable housing. What other things would make it attractive to you to come to Needham? What other things, you know, could we be doing that, why aren't you coming here? When we make a zoning change, why don't you come? And what is it? Is it a parking space rule? Is it, you know, is it just the, just the finances don't work? But bringing in people who have done this in other communities from Acton and Concord and Sudbury, but they're not doing it in Needham, and getting their input on that. So I think if you combine all of those things, an inventory, waiving fees, bringing in the developers, looking at Stephen Palmer, it'll, it'll, there's sort of different strategies that combined will create some forward movement in the, in the vein of affordable housing. I'm now going to turn to Natasha, right?
Yes. Okay. I don't think this is. Can I come back? Can I probably stop here? Or I can? No, just kidding. Well, thank you so much again. And so where I'm with the third group, which was Michael O'Brien, Carol Foshati, and myself, which was about capacity. So we talked about zoning, the housing preservation, and the capacity building. So we did a lot of research on the town, looking and seeing, you know, what is owned by the town. And I know that it's by all different departments, and I was on PPBC for a long time. I understand that there are a lot of needs, but we just, we looked at it, and then we, one of the things that we're really interested in doing is continuing to provide community outreach and education on housing, because I think that it's very complicated, as you've heard here already, and I think there are a lot of opportunities, and we want to make it as accessible as possible. Another thing we want to do is monitor targeted housing goals and the SHI, as Karen was talking about. And I think it's just having a real understanding of what it is, and if we're not meeting it, how do we, how do we get to the goals that we're looking to do? Another thing is identifying impacts of housing proposals. And basically, right now, we're basically reactive. How can we be proactive for this and looking at the impacts? And so we looked at the capacity of the schools. We looked at the capacity of town resources. We looked at, for example, ADUs don't take up a lot of capacity because they're smaller units, but larger units would take up more capacity. And then where, I know that the school is doing a study. So where, where does that land? And how do we make sure that we, we balance the housing with the capacity that the town has? And so one thing that we talked about was boost local and regional support and collaboration for housing. So revisit the Affordable Housing Trust, the roles, the responsibility, and the membership, and how can we maximize that? And, and, you know, regarding the housing plan. And then potential planning board, planning department role in guiding housing vision and plan implementation, just as you talked about, how do we in general look at it? How do we plan and be proactive so that we're ready when these things come about? And if they're not happening, how can we find partners to talk to them to see why is it not happening? So, so for further study, it's conducting a racial impact study and reducing or eliminating local preference to give more opportunities for different types of housing and different equity and diversity throughout the town. So I don't know if anyone in my group has any other thing to say. I kind of said it quickly because I want to see if you have any questions.
I, excuse me, I just had two things I want to add that I forgot to mention when we were talking about Needham Heights, excuse me. When we were talking about Needham Heights, I forgot to mention that one of the patches of area we're talking about rezoning, a big patch, is the Hillside School site. Because eventually the town will be considering what the reuse of that site is. It's likely not soon, maybe five to 10 year timeframe, but why not zone that apartment A1? And then up the hill from there, we have the Crescent Street Industrial, Crescent, the industrial street that's sort of way up there in an odd place, but it's off West Street, and, and it goes up to Honeywell Street where Brookline rug is. And so with that, like that other industrial zone, why not add multifamily housing isn't allowed use? And, and that then could connect with the Hillside School, whatever develops there. And, and I also wanted to mention with regard to the Housing Authority, it's been suggested, well, the Linden Chambers site is within a half mile of Needham Junction Train Station. Why don't we conclude that and rezon that? It's premature, as, as I think Emily mentioned, we don't know what exactly is going to be proposed there. And the apartment A1 dimensions actually are not a very high density, and the Housing Authority may need a higher density to make their project work. So that's something for later. So that's all I wanted to add.
But I agree, Jean. I think what we're saying is we need to look at it holistically. We can't look at it parcel by parcel. We want to look at a total master plan of how all of this affects the Needham Housing Authority, how they can get more density, how we can figure out how we can provide more housing, how it can be more equitable. So it's not one thing. It's looking at Stephen Palmer Hillside, I mean, looking at it for the town and all different aspects. And I feel like, you know, we've done studies for different pieces, but including a traffic study, we know that we get them for the different projects, but can we put all that information together and really understand for capacity and just for understanding in general how, how it all works together as one, as one holistic plan?
Oh, and the one, one thing I want people to realize, the housing that you comply with MBTA guidelines, it has to be by right, but you can, you can go through a site plan approval, you can apply site plan approval process with, which involves a planning board hearing. And we may want to look at our site plan approval criteria and make sure that we have adequate criteria to use in considering any development that comes in. Okay.
Thank you for.
Just a quick, yeah, next steps is that we have a community meeting on November 16th, and then we have the working group meeting on December 8th to review the comments and finalize the plan. So we've been working on it since last October, and we hope to be able to finalize the plan by December 8th, or right after.
Okay. Great. So thank you for all that. I know that it's been an intense amount of work, and I know that the working groups have been hard at work from all the postings that I've seen as they meet repeatedly. I was going to note that this morning on the daily, their podcast is about ADUs in California is actually a pretty interesting podcast with the approach that's been taken there to augmenting housing. So I had several comments, but I'll turn to my board colleagues first. I don't know if anybody wants to, who wants to lead on commenting? I don't know if anybody wants to, who wants to lead on commenting?
Madam Chair.
Heidi, do you want to start?
I just wanted to say that it's been a pleasure to work with this whole group, and particularly the zoning subgroup where I've spent a good deal of time. The expertise is really staggering. And it's been a great learning opportunity for me. I think that one of the things that I had thought a lot about before getting elected and joining this board is the need for Needham to be a little bit more intentional about our planning of how, what kind of community we want to be. And I think that's what this report really talks about. It really talks about where do we want to base our economic activity? Where do we want to, what kind of community do we want to be? Who do we want to welcome? What do we want our socioeconomic mix to be? And I think it really lays out a lot of opportunities for this community to plan for the future. There are many cases that Jean pointed out that we were talking about zoning areas that we don't think of as housing, churches, for example. And I think the idea behind a lot of this is to plan for the future. So to make sure that in any eventuality, we're going to be prepared so that we're not reacting to a parcel suddenly becoming available and then passing zoning to apply to that parcel. We're talking about what do we want our community to look like holistically? And, and how can we invite the people that we want to come and join us in this happy community to, to feel comfortable there? So it's just been, it's been a really nice experience working on this.
I echo everything that Heidi said. And I think it's just really important to give credit where credit is due in everyone on this committee, especially the subcommittees and what you've done with the intentionality, with the, um, the thought and the care that goes into everything that we're trying to accomplish. And I can't imagine how many hours that you've all spent doing this and being a part of this and getting to learn from you. And being a part of that has been truly amazing and hoping to do more with that. I think some things that were said about looking at every possible outcome and being very intentional about that in the parties we have outside of the community and with inside of the community. Want to think about Needham Housing Authority and Reg. And thinking about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and how we can better utilize that. And there's so many different areas that I feel like, once we explore and we get the right studies and things done, I feel like the sky's the limit for where we can go as a community. But I think thanking you is something that just has to be done and can't be done enough. Because I think being in these meetings and watching and the emails that we get with all of the updates and all the data and all the things that you put into this, I just give a lot of credit and kudos to all of you because that is not a light feat. It is a heavy lift, and you continue to push forward. And looking forward to see where we go from here.
Mr. Burrell.
Madam Chair, thank you. A lot to unpack here and really a comprehensive housing plan to this point. So thank you for all of your work. I know it's taken a lot of work. Just quickly, as the planning board had a chance to weigh in on this yet? Or is this kind of the first?
No, we have not yet.
Okay, fine.
We're meeting Thursday night to talk about long-range planning to some extent, maybe three times.
Some of these items, sure.
Okay, great. You know, the issue we have overall is Needham is extremely desirable, as we all know. So since I've been on this board, we've put a lot of housing online, Kendrick, a lot of those housing units, over 1,000. You know, I don't even know the number. You probably do. But even with that increase of supply, you're still seeing those rental units going for 3,000, 4,000, 5,000. We talked about the development on Honeywell. I think those units are going for like 1.2 or 1.3 million each. So we just have to be careful. And I love the zoning proposals that you have to actually do something with those areas that you highlighted for the MBTA. I think that's terrific. I think we just have to be careful of what is really going to be the outcome of that. Are we just going to get, okay, I'm now putting four units, and I'm going to rent them and get 4,000 each, which really doesn't help us? Or am I going to sell those for X amount each, which doesn't help us? So just something, and I don't have the answers. That's why you are doing this. I'm just throwing these things out there because I know what a tough problem it is. If you are going to rezone that in the apartment district criteria, I would just note that a lot of those parcels, and you know this, are, you know, 10,000 square feet, so, or less. So when you do the math, I would just want to make sure that you don't kind of bump up into like, okay, that two-family auto, 9,000 square foot parcel can still just be a two-family. You might have to kind of call it out and say, lots that are 10,000 square feet, you get X instead of, you know, trying to do the math. I like the idea of looking at SRA, ADUs. I'm hesitant on because I think that can just create kind of two families around town. So I'm just hesitant on that idea. I'm open to listening to it. And then teardowns, I just again, want to be careful. We say, you know, we got to do things about teardown to look at the rules and regulations. The more rules and regulations, we can do it. That's fine. We have the Large House Study Committee. But that's going to drive up the cost of the developer. And therefore, you wonder how this affordability thing is going to dovetail into that. So just as we start putting restrictions or regulations or talking about it, something to think about, how does that impact a developer, as was mentioned, from coming in and saying, okay, this is going to be a positive project for me? So it's, it's tough. I don't know the number of units that would have to come online in Needham to get the supply to where it has to be to get affordability. And I think that's a problem that we have. So you're either dealing with some type of subsidy, as we talked about with the Affordable Housing Trust, or some type of deal with a developer where it's X amount in perpetuity like we have before for an affordable unit. So I look forward to watching the progress of this committee. I know there's a lot out there. We're not going to answer anything tonight, but just want to highlight a couple of those things as I listen.
May I respond to one of Mr. Burrell's comments? Because you talked about the difficulty of the small lots and the dimensional requirement for the apartment one, which we want to use everywhere, is 20,000 square feet. You have to have a 20,000 square foot lot. We realized that even if you didn't have that requirement, nobody is going to build a multifamily on a 10,000 square foot lot. Site assembly is challenging. The developer of the one we have of the mixed use on Dedham Avenue tried to work with the owner of the parcel that went all the way down to the corner of Dedham Avenue and Great Plain Avenue and thought it would have a much better development if it could have brought it right down to that corner. No luck, no cooperation. It's not easy. We realize that it's not easy. But we're going to, we're just focused on the zoning. And then how do we actually work with developers and bring them to the table? Thank you, Mr. Burrell.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I could just respond, like, I think the 20,000 square foot, I know you can put four units on less than that. So I would just look at kind of what would be the minimum to get more than two units on a lot that would work. And it might be somewhere in 12,000 or 13,000, 14,000 square feet, if you get creative. So I just, that 20,000 might be more of a barrier than it is.
Thank you very much. We'll really consider that. And that's one way, Oscar Mertz has been very helpful with his experience as an architect. Then we'll definitely consider that.
Thanks for your work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is a monumental report. This is amazing. Adam, give yourself time to read it. And it was fascinating. I love pouring into the charts and graphs and the details. It's amazing how Needham's population is changing, how it's shifting. And I really like all the thoughtful approach that you've, you're doing to it. This is a regional issue, and you're making a really good fix on, at our level in the town. So thank you very much. I really like the, a few questions. The MBTA zoning, is that all done? That can be all done on the Highland-Chesnut Street spine?
Yes, that's right. That's what that map shows.
So we're almost, so nothing around Bird's Hill or Hershey Station?
Oh, actually, we did talk about, but we don't think it's, it's large enough really to, to contribute. We presently have the neighborhood develop, what's it called? Neighborhood business districts. We have a small one up at Hershey Station where the Dunkin' Donuts is. And we have another small one over on Central Avenue at the corner of Reservoir Street. There's a little market there. But the sites are so small. We, we are looking at those sites to see how we could reasonably provide for some multifamily housing. So we're definitely looking at those sites, but we're really not talking about expanding the business zones in those areas.
Okay. Thank you. Not to get into the weeds too much, but on the downtown, the parking station, was this part of it? Or the amount of, or development in Needham Center, the overlay district?
We, one thing we really have to look at is whether the requirement of, I think it's presently for the apartment A1 district, one and a half spaces per unit, whether that's really needed. We do have these transit-oriented development. And there's a real move toward getting rid of the parking requirements or reducing them. And I think we should look at that, make it one, one unit, one parking space per unit.
Yeah. I think if we go to like a shared economy, would that be required? Would people, in fact, you didn't ask, so why bother?
We haven't actually seen that part. I mean, that, it's wonderful that the, that the town manager has initiated the parking study, but we haven't actually seen the results yet. Yeah, I didn't think so.
Okay. And then finally, just the, the purchase of Militia Heights, Chelsa R. Will that will play into, it comes up a lot about people with disabilities and, you know, home and.
We, all we said about that in the report is that it's premature to know. We don't know what rezoning they may need. That is actually zoned now for acre lots up there.
Okay.
And we don't know what they'll need. And it's, it's too far away to be, to qualify as part of a MBTA community's zone. And, and so like the Housing Authority parcels, we said, we just have to wait and see on that.
Okay. Yes. Tip of the hat to you. This was a great project. Did great. Thank you.
I'm just curious, you know, the discussion about 10%, 12.5%. How do you think about the difference between those two? And is there a reason why you chose 12 and a half rather than 10?
I think Karen actually had the whole chart. We created a whole chart. I don't know, Karen, if you, if this is something that you would like to answer. It was based on information about all the different groups and the 80% versus 60% versus. So I don't know if you, if you want to add any information, Karen. I think you're muted right now. Or Lee, of course.
I think Lee could actually kind of chime in here on the 12 and a half percent more effectively.
We have used 10% in a couple of our rezonings that focus on elderly housing. Like at Wing Gate, we only required 10% affordable. And the same thing, if they had built the, or were proposing to build independent living units at the Curtis Building, it would be 10%. But, but otherwise, we had 12 and a half percent.
Yeah, I can say that there was, because property values were rising so much and looking at what other communities were doing, which was more geared to the 15%. I think when the MOAD was the, was being discussed, Lee probably could, should chime in on this. There was an interest in saying, well, we should up the requirement. And I think the 12 and a half percent was like a compromise. Do you want to?
Yes, I think, I think that is the case. I think we were seeing what other towns were doing. I mean, we were seeing what the increase in values were. And we thought that 10% was, was really less than what we should be asking for in light of what comparable towns were requiring in terms of what land values were. That economically, it could work for developers at these higher percentages and so that we should be more aggressive. And I think we looked at 15% and then compromised the 12 and a half percent of that time.
Okay. I, I was going to say, that's still something that I think about and just trying to understand, you know, these tiers, right? The, the MBTA communities is aimed at just increasing housing with the idea that if you increase housing enough, that housing prices will drop when there's sufficient housing available as opposed to being in a state of shortage now. And so much of that is aimed at making workforce housing affordable, which is a different level of affordability than the affordability that we're talking here. So how all of those mesh and how we try to figure out those different levels of affordability? I think you guys have done a really fabulous job of trying to think about the affordable units, but the workforce affordability still feels like a challenge in this particular town, that, that it still ends up being quite striated.
Correct.
So I think it's, we were, we have never said that we're meeting one particular definition of affordability. We're, we're looking at, I think Dan Matson coined it best when he said there's the affordability with a small a and affordability with a capital A. There's the market affordability, which is a huge missing middle.
Right.
So all of the thinking that we've been doing in all these subgroups has been looking at the greatest possible diversity of opportunity to create for 100, 110% AMI, you know, all these other smaller cluster units that are possible for condominiums. Again, you know, as, as Matt said, we're looking to create more housing because in the economy, we think that's going to essentially drive the, the overall cost of living and buying houses down. But it's going to take time, and it's going to take opportunities across that entire spectrum of affordability.
And volume.
And this is a multi-community endeavor as well.
Correct.
So working in concert and raising our.
Volume will have a total effect as well. It's not just Needham.
The MBTA communities guidelines come into play here. Not only do they not want you to have more than 10% affordable, you cannot require affordability to be lower than 80% of the median income. Now, that doesn't mean a development can't, we couldn't through other means. I mean, we were talking about rezoning some town-owned parcels. Of course, if the town is at the table as a partner in the development process, you can want a lower affordability as part of the deal. But the zoning would just say 80%. And to, to be comfortable, we have to say 80%.
I wanted to note that we have some work around Steven Palmer on the Select Board Goals. I don't necessarily start from the assumption that, that it continues as housing. I think it could be a broad range of things. And so at this point, I just want to make clear that it's not a guarantee that it continues as housing. I think that's a process that the town needs to explore and understand what the best use is for that parcel coming back to the town after a very long time. So, but that is something that we'll work on more this year and have some better ideas about at the end of the year. I think you are stating your intent for, for what you would like to see. We understand and we hear that, right? And we'll take a look at, at what all the needs are that conceivably might come there.
Respond to when, when part of that, of course, Emory Grover is now zoned apartment A1. The zoning doesn't really affect what it is the town can and can't do with the property.
Right.
Can I add just something to that? But I think, again, it's looking at it overall. Maybe Steven Palmer isn't the right location for it because there's a better use. But where are the right locations? And where are there opportunities of land that, as you were saying, Emily, that, that, you know, don't have anything on them that, that could be purchased by the town? I think it's just balancing it all out to figure out how do we, you know, have the services that we need for the town and for the different departments? But how does housing become part of that bigger plan?
Yeah. And then the last thing that sort of struck me, and, and it really goes back to this question as you've allocated, you know, near-term, medium-term, longer-term. The one item that was in longer term that, that to me actually seemed like a low-hanging fruit piece was this question about reduce or eliminate local preference. So currently, we're at 70. I think the notion of conceivably reducing our local preference number isn't probably an easier decision to make. I, there's still some place for local preference. We worry very much about employees who work for the town, who we'd like to be able to have an option to afford in the town. So, so I still think having some of that available is a really valuable thing. But certainly reducing below 70 to create some additional opportunities would seem to make sense. And then I think this board will be anxious and curious to hear, when you talk about near-term, what are the things that the planning board will choose to focus on for next spring? So is there something that's on that list? And what, near-term, there's a lot of near-term here, and I suspect not all of it is near-term. So what really rises to the top?
Well, we have a work. Well, we have our work cut out for us because the MBTA communities guidelines require that the town adopt whatever zoning they, they plan to adopt to comply. Not this annual town meeting, but essentially at the next annual town meeting. So.
And that plan needs to be filed then by December of next year, if I recall.
Yes. We have to have, know what we're going to do and tell them what we're going to do. By I think the end of January 2023, and then we have to do it by the end of 2023. Yeah.
So, so this board saw the plan today that sort of builds that spine, that that's the, the straw man right now for how it will be approached.
I completely appreciate all this feedback and we have our work cut out for us for between now and December. I just wanted to sort of flag and it, it was, it was mentioned. You said you have your, your work cut out. We have our work cut out for us. You know, I think how this gets implemented and who get, who is responsible, you know, I would hate to see as a, as a constituent that we developed this great plan and then we handed it off and there was nobody available to do the work because we all have, are doing a ton of stuff. So I don't think this working group in has embraced that we're implementers. So I think there's a question at some point to the select board, to the planning board of what, how, how does this get done? Right? We can all say, oh, this is great. Go do it. But I think really you look to, looking to you for direction and support as to, as to making it a meaningful, a plan that actually moves, moves the community forward.
I would probably offer to that, and I shouldn't speak for the select board, but I think that there's a substantial amount of work that you've already put in. There are items that you're all already looking towards some action steps. And I know that, that housing is a priority for this planning board. And we're embarking on a, a planning process, which I don't think we have in a very long time. This is one element of it. And I, I shouldn't speak for the select board, but I, but I, from some conversations with some members, I know how committed you are to participating, you know, in, in the important goal of raising our density in an equitable way that serves a broad commitment to the, making the town better. And I think that we're fortunate to live in a town where most of us share in that common vision and, and common goal.
Okay. Thank you for flagging that, Karen. Karen's up first.
Yeah, I, I, just a brief comment. When you talk about workforce housing, we have a really good example of a resale that we're coordinating right now for the Needham Housing Authority. One of their high rock condos is being resold at the 110% AMI income limit for $473,900. It's a three bedroom unit and it really shows that there are options of including different income tiers and various developments. And just thought you'd be, you might be interested in hearing about it.
Great. Thank you. Avery. Can't hear you.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, thanks for the chance to chime in here. I just wanted to sort of reiterate how enthusiastic I am about this plan and the progress and you know how far it's come. I think that in particular, what stands out to me is that this isn't just symbolic, but now there's, you know, the potential for actual policy support for, you know, socioeconomic, supporting different, you know, access among people from different socioeconomic strata beyond just the very wealthy who are able to afford Needham just as is. And then those who are able to qualify for affordable housing or other housing subsidies. We're missing a huge chunk in the middle, which was sort of very well outlined throughout the housing plan. And I think that actually having some policies to support those groups is going to be huge and potentially a large turning point. So I just wanted to reiterate how happy I was to see that. And then secondly, this is sort of well beyond my purview as, you know, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. But on the teardown piece, obviously a very complex issue. I hardly want to scratch the surface there, but I think that, you know, given that there's, you know, going to be just some discussion around the feasibility of different policies, whether there's the tree removal by law, demolition delay, historic district designation. I know there's a lot of different ideas that have been floated and that will continue to be floated. I think something else that might be useful is just the idea of waste. You know, we've got climate, the Climate Action Plan Committee, we have Green Needham, we have a series of individuals and groups all dedicated to environmental stewardship in town. And something that really hasn't been discussed enough in my personal opinion is just, you know, it's an entire house and a house filled of stuff that just sort of is getting demolished and thrown away and beyond the issues around housing and size and overhousing. And that's something that maybe could be introduced on the policy end as well. And I know that there are a lot of partner groups and individuals throughout town that might be able to sort of offer some insight there too. So that's all I wanted to say, but very well done for everyone who's sort of contributed to this and worked on it.
Great. Thank you. And as you all know, there are lots of people in Needham who own their own single family residence. So we have created a constituency that is interested in figuring out how their own values are protected and maximized. And so within that, these are all things that we balance. Okay. Thank you very much for all your work. All right. With that, it must be eight o'clock. We're not maybe as far off as I thought. And that brings us to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first two items that I have are to discuss collect bargaining agreements. I may ask, I could discuss together and vote separately, Madam Chair.
Certainly.
The first is the DPW Building Custodian and Trades employees. And then the second is the Independent Public Employee Association. The first group, BCTIA, represents our building focused employees, our custodians and our skilled trades like electricians, plumbers, HVAC carpenters. And the Independent Public Employees or NIPIA represents our more outward facing, including laborers, craft workers, HMEOs, everybody in the, the non building, building maintenance division, including highway, water and sewer, fleet, parks and forestry. So there's approximately 110 plus or minus employees. This is a very large group of our, of our 400 employees townwide. And so we're very pleased to be able to bring these contracts to the board. The, the first group is for fiscal year 2003 is the Custodian and Trades. And what we've negotiated with this group, which is really a good way to provide stability, both for the town budgeting and for the employees, is a one-year agreement for FY23 and a three-year contract for '24, '25 and '26. And we're looking at, in the first year, implementing the new classification and compensation plan that was brought into the town, approved by the personnel board and the select board for FY22. The BCTIA already had a contract, so they are the last group to be put into the new schedule, which is, you may recall, a study that we did to in part ensure that we had pay equity across like positions in, with like responsibility across the departments townwide. And that was implemented in FY22. We're looking at implementing a plan in FY23, so there's no specific wage increases. And then wage increases for '24, '25 and '26, really moving out into the future at two and a half, three and three and a half percent. And a couple of other key items that we're doing in this contract, including implementing a critical title retention and recruitment incentive program when the town believes that it's necessary. We've had, there are certain titles that in certain markets are impossible to fill. I'm sure people know this from their own employment, but trying to find an HVAC person in, in, in Eastern Massachusetts in 2022 is a very difficult challenge. So we haven't implemented it yet, but it's something that we would be able to do. The other items that are in this contract are similar to the things that we've been trying to standardize townwide. With respect to the Independent Public Employees Association, NIPIA, the outward facing employees, we're proposing a two-year agreement at 2% a year and then actually proposing to change the snow pay. This, this contract does a couple of things for us. It gives us modest increases for our employees, particularly in this inflationary environment. And it also provides pay for the service that we are very much relying on them to provide now, which is snow and ice because we're unable to hire as many contractors as we used to. The last thing I wanted to say on the two agreements is that they, the new classification and compensation study effectively created more room within the step and range structure. So if you picture a range, we have 10 steps from minimum to maximum. And, and for employees, particularly at the lower end of the pay scales, there, there was provided more room. We also had, we were seeing turnover of employees that who've been here a long time, who are sitting at the top of the range. So what you end up with is a situation where in these two groups of 110 people, you have virtually every single person, probably with the exception of fewer than one hand, who are at the, in the steps, which makes the carrying costs of the contract look higher. So in, this is a cyclical, cyclical issue where in five years, when everybody's at the top, the carrying cost will be, will be smaller. It's also, you know, it's a little counterintuitive because when somebody leaves at the top, you're bringing somebody in actually at less pay, but their increase looks higher. So these are higher numbers than we have typically seeing, but I just wanted to be clear that the wage increases that we're proposing are certainly within our, within our range. And if you look at FY23 and '24 together, if you look at all the employees in both groups, all in the departments, they're in the mid-five ranges. They're not as high as when you separate them. So that is, they are looking higher than, than typical, but probably the next contract, they'll be more moderate. Happy to answer any questions on these two.
I'm excited that we were able to get this done. I think that is just a, a big bonus in, in looking after, you know, so many people that do so many things for us and do a lot of the things that we just can't thank them enough for. So appreciative of getting.
I couldn't agree more. You're absolutely right. You know, when, when it's freezing cold or there's somebody is sick at lunch at an elementary school, you know, these are the kinds of, it's very difficult work and we very much appreciate them. Thank you.
I'm grateful that you were able to settle it in time that it can go to town.
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve and sign the memorandum of agreement between the town and the DPW Custodian and Trades Independent Association for FY2023 and FY2024 through FY2026.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That one's unanimous?
The Madam Chair moved that the board approve and sign the memorandum of agreement between the town and the Needham Independent Public Employees Association for FY2023 and FY2024.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item is one of the board's recently adopted goals is to plan for community observance of Juneteenth. And so we have drafted a proposed committee working group charge, committee charge and composition and seek the input of the board and would ask the board to adopt the committee charge and composition at your meeting on October 25th. And then we would work to recruit candidates to be on the committee.
Any comments or questions? This was a goal.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to say that this step, as far as what we're doing for the town of Needham, how excited I am to be a part of this board and, and moving forward with this and celebration and something that is going to be, you know, hopefully a, a pretty amazing turnout to learn more about where we came from and where we are as a town and acknowledging the history of enslaved people in Needham and, and talking about ways to educate the public, I think is really important. And then getting the town involved and have the constituents be a part of this committee to bring this to life and with the support of the town, I think that is, I know some other towns have done this in, in cities. I believe Newton did it last year and, you know, getting advice from other surrounding communities and, and making this something that, you know, happens in Needham for a very long time. So I'm excited for this and this opportunity to, to celebrate, to acknowledge, to heal and to just be a part of something that this town hasn't done yet in this way. And yeah, just thankful for this opportunity.
Comments? Start on the goal list. So, and, and hopefully that means that at some point soon we'll be ready to start advertising and looking for people to volunteer for this. All right. The next item, Kate.
Goal number two tonight. The board adopted a goal to identify opportunities for expanded active and passive recreation facilities, including an action sports park. An additional boat ramps was actually in your, in your goal statement. The, we had originally drafted this proposed working group in, to be performed in cooperation with the Park and Recreation Commission to include playgrounds. And Katie King met with the commission last week and they felt that they had a good handle on their playground planning. And so we did remove that. There's some ongoing conversation about whether hockey and off-leash dog areas should be in here. So again, this is recommended for October 25th. I do, I do believe that the committee can handle the off-leash area. I think the, the, it's been an immediate need. There's a lot of constituencies for it and they're often to be the same areas you might be looking at, you know, around town. So ice hockey, I would leave to the board's decision as to whether you think that this group needs that or whether there'd be a future. Future group for that. Feedback, welcome, and we'll bring it back on the 25th of October.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I guess as far as hockey is concerned, I think there's enough in this committee to work on. And I think if we want to explore hockey, and I know it's been back and forth, but we could do that in a different way. I think in this manner, both of these goals, I think can be accomplished in a shorter timeline than hockey rank code. So I would just like the charge to stay the way it is and get this group together. It's been something that's been discussed for a long time on this board and Park and Rec. And I think this is the right way, as we have the joint meeting with them, to move it forward to get some information and hopefully get recreational park and some boat ramp access to the Charles. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
I, I would like to see off-leash dog parks included in this. That's a reasonable.
Kate, I don't know. Were you able to get any feedback from the summer pilot? Or is that something that we might have when we talk about this next?
I did speak to the chief. He's, I'm following up the animal control officer, but the chief reported he went by there a few days a week. Every weekend there was no activity. So I don't know whether the, maybe the, the 10th quarter pollard wasn't as convenient as other options.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So this will come back. Positions on special time meeting articles.
So at your meeting, the last meeting in September, the board took positions on a number of the articles and some of them were held for presentations or further information. So Madam Chair, Article One and Article Two are now ready since the board voted to support them.
So I would welcome a motion on Article One.
I move the recommended option of Article One.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Adopted?
We recommend Article Two.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is adopted.
Coming then, Madam Chair, to Article Seven, appropriate for the Needham Climate Action Planning Consulting Advice.
So that we also have the C theme. Is there a motion? And a second? Any discussion on that one? We talked a little bit earlier. All in favor? Any opposed? Adopt?
Next, Article Nine, appropriating for Ridge Hill Building Demolition Supplement. Pleased to report that we had excellent bidding response for this project likely, likely because of the time of year. And earlier this evening, the PPBC voted to proceed with the project with the existing funds due to favorable rebids. And I would therefore ask the board to vote to withdraw Article Nine.
That's wonderful news.
Yes.
I would welcome a motion to withdraw.
So moved.
That's fat on that. That's bad enough. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Or withdrawn?
So Madam Chair, that brings us to Emory Grover. The PPBC is also discussing tonight favorable bid prices for Emory Grover with respect to what their most recent estimate assumed would need to be the supplement. So as you recall, we told town meeting in May that we expected there would need to be supplemental appropriation. So the PPBC is meeting tonight to decide exactly how much that will be, but we believe it will be less than the 4.4 or 4.5 million we mentioned in the warrant article explanation. And the finance committee will be meeting tomorrow night to discuss that. So the board may want to take a position on this on the night of town meeting.
Okay. So the fundamental piece of information that members of the public should know is that although we signaled in the spring that additional monies would be needed to complete Emory Grover, the good news is that those monies will be less than we worried that they would be in the spring and had signaled in the warrant. So the bids have come in favorably, and we'll see where they land tonight and what discussion there is tomorrow night. Thank you. Article 11, appropriate for property acquisition.
They're still meeting too. The board heard a presentation tonight from Jack Dolly from Northland Residential. This one is ready for a vote.
Move that we recommend adoption of Article 11.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimously adopt.
Finally, the only other remaining article is Article 14, Community Energy Agreement.
Again, I welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, move that we, we adopt Article 14.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You know, you heard my comments earlier. I'm going to be voting against this article. I think I know where the board is on this. But again, locking into rates, not really having a policy of how this board's going to decide those rates. And I understand there's going to be a balance. You'll get other communities, though there are, you know, some are up, some are down. So if this does pass town meeting, I just hope, or I know that after that, we should set a policy, some type of metric on what that rate is going to be. And when we decide to, you know, get out of that contract, we go into another contract where we put that rate that allows it to be reasonable for the taxpayer when we look around the landscape of energy prices. So that's right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just want to reiterate that this, this article only authorizes, or town meetings authorization only allows us to look at the pricing and begin to see what the options are to establish what a contract negotiation would be. It does not obligate us in any way. And so the, I just want to make it clear to everyone who might be listening that this article only authorizes us to begin this process. It does not commit us to anything.
And the other observation that I would make about this article is that that looking, because of the way these agreements are structured, does not obligate the town to any costs for the consultants who's engaged on this. So another piece of information.
And I understand that, Madam Chair, I do, I just, it does set us on the path towards this. And I'd like to understand what our policy is before we get on that path. But thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And so for one, it is adopted.
So the board will meet before town meeting downstairs, probably 6:45.
Is that published? I'm not sure that one's on my calendar yet, but.
It's the night of town meeting.
The night of town meeting.
Yes.
Okay. The next item.
Next item is to seek the board's formalization of the appointment of Miaris in Harrington as town council and reaffirm the appointment of Nick Anastopoulos as labor council. Attorney Heep attended the board's meeting on August 9th, and attorney Anastopoulos was here at your last meeting. In August, I outlined for the board, my view of the reasons that, how we've measured the quality of the services that we have received and all the work that has been performed by these two trusted members of our team. We really rely on their advice and counsel with respect to the town council virtually every day and labor council probably at least weekly. And given the workload, and I, I will say, I think very highly of both firms, and I wholeheartedly endorse it. I know there's been some discussion about whether the town should have done a more wide search. And all I can tell you at this point is the board's workload is so heavy that I think the search at this point would be a significant disruption in the work that you're trying to get done. But that's not to say that I also wouldn't recommend at the end of the day that we work with these two firms. The, these, these decisions are revocable by the board. They're, they're your decision at any time.
Welcome a motion.
The board vote to formalize the appointment of the firm of Miaris in Harrington as town council in accord to section 20B of the town charter and reaffirm the appointment of Nick Anastopoulos as labor council in accordance with section 20B seven of the town charter.
And a second? Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I just want to point out, and it wasn't, we had that presentation today from Jack Dolly, but Miaris in Harrington, in that discussion and negotiation, was really point on that, on that purchase. And you talked about leaving it up to professionals. And I think if we had a, a different professional, we might have gotten a much worse result or no result at all. So it's those things, I think, that are kind of behind the scenes or, you know, that you, you don't see. But that legal advice and advice working to get this deal closed, I think, was very, was, was incredible. So it's just another example of, of town council and what they can do for the town.
Thank you. And, and listening to what Matt said and understanding that viewpoint and just really appreciating all the work that Attorney Heep and Miles Harrington have done for us, I don't necessarily agree on the point that if we had someone else, it may not have gotten done to that capacity. But I feel like all the things that they've been doing, and they're wrapped up in so many things for our town that we appreciate. And I think what Kate said is that, as it would be a disturbance, probably right now with all the things we have going on, it's left at our discretion to appoint or open up a surge at any time that we choose. Is that correct, Kate? But for where we are right now is what's happening. I would say overall, I definitely enjoyed working with Attorney Heep. Haven't had many opportunities to meet our labor council, except for the one time last meeting. But overall, it's been a great journey. And we've had learning experiences and things that have come up that we have tried to work through. And I am, you know, looking forward to continue working with them, but also being cognizant of if that opportunity presents itself or feel like we may need to look elsewhere. That's something that we can do. But right now, where we are, for me, it makes sense to stick to who we have.
Great. And I would certainly observe that the, the notion of working with the firm of Miaris in Harrington across the range of services that the town requires has been a great choice, rather than working with a sole practitioner at this point in the history of the town. I think that's a good call. Any other points, questions? All right. Then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Five zero, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last item I have is just a simple reminder that the select board's next meeting is Wednesday, Wednesday, November 9th, because of the election day. So please make sure your calendar, this is the calendar the board voted in April, that everybody's got Wednesday on their calendar.
Well, no on Wednesday.
All right. Sorry. I was just double checking. I was like, oh, we're not meeting the day after town meeting? Because I was so, I like, I know.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I didn't mean to. You're meeting the 25th. That's a wonderful reminder. Thank you. Yes, we have many things. It's not your next meeting. It's your next month. Yes.
When we get to the spring, we do have town meetings that we don't meet after. When there's town meetings all the time.
Okay, that was great. Anything else? That's it. Are there any committee reports tonight?
I was just going to say, I feel like our committee of the housing working group met and gave a really extensive report earlier today. I was happy to be a part of and happy to listen to. So I think they kind of went through all of that. So thank you to them for all being here.
Great. Thank you. I don't know that I have anything else for tonight. I do just want to close by saying thank you to my colleague, Mr. Nelson, for chairing the last meeting when I was away flitting around Italy and having a marvelous time. But thank you for, for stewarding the town. And that is what the town counts on, that, you know, everything continues seamlessly. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And thank you, Matt, for acknowledging that last meeting and kind of calming the nerves. Because I feel like that was the fastest meeting, but also the longest meeting in my life. It was a good start.
And I would welcome a motion to adjourn this evening.
So moved.
And a second? Because they're slowing the drive right now. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.